Good evening. The November 14th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Councilmember Winn?
Here.
Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Mayor Biss?
Here.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Saffredin?
Here.
Councilmember Revell?
Here.
Councilmember Reed? And Councilmember Haragaris?
Here.
We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work. The first item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations, of which I have two. First of all, November 15th tomorrow is America Recycles Day. There's a variety of reasons this is important to our community and a variety of things that we ought to do to observe it. As one part of this, the city of Evanston has partnered with the District 65 faculty and students to hold a design competition. The way this works is middle school students were invited to submit a design that would be displayed on a single City of Evanston Public Works recycling truck. Subsequent to the deadline passing, the public was engaged in helping to select a design to use for the Public Works vehicle. Over 300 Evanstonians participated in that part of the phase and eventually chose shoot middle school student Zainab Bilgic. Zainab was here earlier this evening to accept our congratulations for her design, which looks as follows. She is perhaps not surprising of a middle schooler on a school night, had to make it home before now, but we really appreciate her really remarkable design, the work of all the other students, the community members who participated, and we hope you'll join us in congratulating Zainab. The second item from my public announcements and proclamations is a proclamation for Sigma Gamma Row Sorority Incorporated Centennial, celebrating 100 years of Sisterhood Scholarship and Service, which I will read quickly. Whereas Sigma Gamma Row Sorority Incorporated was founded on November 12th, 1922, at Butler University in Indianapolis, Indiana by seven young black educators, Mary Lou Allison Gardner-Little, Dorothy Hanley-Whiteside, Vivian Irene White-Marbury, Nanny Mae Gon-Johnson, Hattie Mae Annette Dooland-Redford, Bessie Mae Downey-Rodes-Martin, and Hubina McClure. And whereas the founding seven pearls of Sigma Gamma Row Sorority, Inc., demonstrated incredible courage to create a black Greek-lettered organization on a predominantly white campus during the height of the Ku Klux Klan in Indiana in particular, I would add. Whereas in its 100 years, this 100,000-plus-member nonprofit collegiate sorority has remained committed to building on their founders' vision of greater service, greater progress, as evidenced in the encouragement and promotion of high scholastic attainment, community service, improvement in the quality of life through its chapters, members, and affiliates throughout the world. And whereas the Evanston chapter of Sigma Gamma Row Sorority, Inc., Delta Psi Sigma, has had a royally golden impact on the Evanston area through their annual youth symposium, Operation Big Book Bag, meaningful volunteerism, community uplift and leadership. And whereas Sigma Gamma Row Sorority, Inc., celebrates its centennial year on Saturday, November 12th, 2022, and recognizing the trailblazing seven founders and dedicated members across the world who continue to carry the organization forward, now therefore I, Daniel Biss, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim November 12th, 2022, a Sigma Gamma Row Sorority Incorporated Centennial, 100 Years of Sisterhood Scholarship and Service Day in the City of Evanston, and in recognition of their founders and service to the Evanston community and celebration of their centennial achievements. Please join me in congratulating them.
I just want to say, I wonder if you were founded about the time that this meeting, the first meeting started. It's been 100 years, I think you've been waiting just to get to this point. Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Counselmember Harris?
Just wanted to say congratulations to my Greek sisters. Welcome to the Centennial Club. Congratulations, you do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our goal for the evening is to end the meeting before the bicentennial. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Clerk Mendoza. I also want to recognize all the city staff here tonight. I wanted to share that the city is in receipt of a report from a group of our black employees. The report contains troubling and disturbing concerns raised by our staff. The city council, myself, senior staff, are taking the report very seriously. There's already been a number of conversations and meetings with city council, senior staff, HR, outside experts, and I've reached out to the group as well on multiple occasions. We plan to issue a roadmap before the end of the month addressing the report and the recommendations. We want to move quickly, but we also want to move thoughtfully and get this right. We look forward to working with the group as we move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
We received communications from Sergio Hernandez, Donna Fellen, Peter Rolwitz, Tim Abuchon, Jen Papas, and Kathy Rospenda. Some of these are in support of the Oakton, against the Oakton bus route, and then support also for the open letter. Those emails are in your inbox if you want to read them all.
Thank you. The next item on the list for public is, on the agenda is public comment. This evening, we have a large number of people who have signed up for public comment. I believe the number that I calculated was 29. So each participant in public comment will be given a minute and 40 seconds. We begin, as always, with those who signed up in person to speak in person. I just want to reiterate, if you don't hear a name called, those who signed up online to speak in person will be recognized as well. So we begin with Tim Schoolmaster.
Good evening, Mayor Biss, Manager Stowe, and members of the council. These folks just sort of wandered in tonight. They have an interest in the public pension, public safety pension funding issue, as I did. I was allowed to present my informative presentation at A&amp;PW tonight for any of you who did not see it, and I will send it to all of you, and there's contact information if you have any questions. In return, this group, which includes my fire counterpart, Jack Mortel, from the Fire Pension Fund, three deputy chiefs retired, three who are interim chiefs, and a number of other outstanding current and former officers and firefighters and paramedics. We appreciate your efforts to properly fund both funds and stop this many-year charade. You've funded your IMRF and Social Security obligations faithfully throughout the years, and we think it's time, and I think I presented some compelling evidence that we need to get back on track. So we appreciate that. I understand the Budget and Finance Committee has recommended full funding and not what you see in your budget, and also, I believe, A&amp;PW this evening made that same recommendation or will consider it. Thank you for your consideration. I'm at extension 5049 if you need any other information, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you very much. And I would add, thank you for your long service, both on the Police Pension Board and on our Police Department. The next speaker is Rodney Green.
Good evening, Clerk Mendoza, Mayor Biss, council members, Rodney Green, 5th Ward, since 1988. I'm here to talk about the, a letter from the employees of the city. I got three recommendations for you to do, if you follow through that, is that you are to outsource all human resource functions to a professional organization with strong diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice qualifications. You should also conduct a thorough racial equity audit of the city of Evanston's Human Resources Department from an independent agency. Thirdly, you should develop plans, as you say you're going to do, to address the pay equity gap, and also allocate funding in the support of implementing a racial change action plan. Also, I'm going to talk about the so-called adjustment to the nudity ordinance. What I saw, and what you have erased out, was that you take out "her," breasts, female, then you start to explain what these mean, but in your explanation, you still are saying that any kind of obscenity or nudity, you have to have an opaque dressing above the nipple? So that means that if any man or woman has breasts, I don't give if it's a man or woman, but they got breasts, they ought to be covered. Why? Because your children are watching this. What kind of example is this department showing the children of today and tomorrow about what nudity is? And then you're saying, you say that nudity is only when, indecent exposure is when, you're committing a sexual penetration or sexual conduct appearing in any public place not properly and decently clothed. So how does this change? It doesn't make any sense to me, and I think a lot of other parents will feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Bennett Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't think I was going to be called, but quickly, I have to tell you a story. I used to live in a 5'7" old neighborhood when I was six years old, and my two sisters and I lived three blocks from Boynton School, and we weren't allowed to go there. We had to walk to noise, and at that time, there were no freeways, so Sherman Avenue and Sheraton Road were Disney travel streets and hazardous. We would pass white kids going to Boynton, and they would tease us. At first, I was saying, if I was white, I'd be all right. And then I realized, they don't know who we are. We've got Joe Louis, Paul Oomson, Marion Anderson, and I'm going to make, decide, tell them, cheat them who we are. I've been doing it for eight decades or more. I was close friends of two very important people, Harold Washington, whom you're familiar with, but Muhammad Ali. And they were extraordinary people, but they were both of African descent. And it's just like discussing that about the United UL, Underwritten Laboratory. The substance is more important than the sign. What that entity is doing is more important than our look. And race, again, is not a matter of genetics or up strength, it's not a matter of biology. It's not, because we're all the same. We just happen to have a few genes that are different, make it have white skin and/or blond hair or whatever, and some black folk have blond hair, as you know, and some have white skin. My point simply being that the report that employees are being treated poorly reminds me of what Father Bob Audershaw used to say, "Drive-by diversity exists in Evanston." You're more concerned with the concept of Evanston being the place rather than doing something about it. So I recommend you set up a committee that's independent, independent committee consisting of citizens, official, public officials for representation, and staff that has the power to look into the whole issue of race. It's ridiculous, ridiculous. Again, I was six over almost nine decades ago, and yet still, we still in Evanston have the problem of race. They should not have it, and I think you, as our leader, should do something about it in the year of 2022. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to another public comment session as required by law, but we're still trying to achieve the goal as intended by public comment, to foster a dialogue with residents. I see you've added new language to the public comment paragraph on the agenda, talking about disorderly conduct, threatening to bar participants from further participation in that meeting. Very interesting, because on 5/24/21, I quoted you, Mayor Biss, and thanked you for stating that this work cannot be successful without meaningful and significant public input. We have given council members plenty of input, however, we've not received feedback or the discussions with residents necessary for the public to understand the issues that are plaguing the city of Evanston and affect our daily lives, and how to resolve them, more importantly. How, we did not finish the budget hearing as requested by three council members, and tonight you're planning on voting on accepting the new budget when we didn't even finish the public hearing on the budget. Didn't finish the public hearing on...
15 seconds.
The TIF hearing, and the truth and taxation hearing, I don't know that we completed that. All required by law, and no explanation from city council as to the guidelines for such hearings. How does a public hearing work? What are the guidelines that you have for public hearing? Okay?
Time.
There should be a discussion with no time limit, okay? And when and where will residents get their questions and concerns answered?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jack Mortel.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask that maybe we call two or three names at a time, so folks are kind of queued up?
Sure, good point. I usually do that only for the online, but I don't know why. So then, we're about to hear from Mr. Mortel, who will be followed by Ms. Betty Esther, followed by Mike Vasilko.
Good evening. I appreciate you making the time. You've got your hands full tonight. I can see that. I'll be fairly short. Bob Seidenberg has been writing about the pension fund problem for over 40 years. Talked with Tim, we're going to send you an article from back then, and I just want to tell you how it closes. There was a lawyer, Attorney Peter Kelly, he taught law school courses on pension benefits, and he closes his article, because he said, "This is a bombshell that they have." This is 40 years ago. And it says, "Peter Kelly refuses to blame the present city council for the state of the pension fund." And that's true, this is a hot potato you've inherited. "The present council was faced with a longstanding problem that developed over years by past councils. However, the present council should only be blamed if it perpetuates and the underfunding problem continues." That's all I'd like to say. You guys have inherited something, you've got a chance to fix it, apparently you've got the money to fix it. You've got, I have a fiduciary responsibility to my beneficiaries of my fund, and I just want to tell you that, speaking for the fire fund, we're certainly in lockstep with Tim and the police fund. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ms. Betty Esther, who will be followed by Mike Vasilko, and then Betsy Wilson.
It's been a long time since I've been here. No work done here, no respect, nothing. But I'm here tonight to stand with my sisters and brothers that are like me, and the issues that they are facing that has been talked about when I came to Evanston, and nothing is so. So I hope going forth, it will be. The other thing I want to ask, you're talking about the work group for the Public Safety Reimagining Group, and that they are, you having a consultant, and they're going to meet with that group, and you had something that was supposed to came from the group, the LEAP, which I don't know, was surprised to hear that. Since I was on that committee, sat in the group, well, did the virtual meetings with you, and that was never brought forth. So you're saying the group is doing this. No, the group is not doing that, because nobody that was in that group has had any conversation or meeting. If you're going to ask the public people to join group and work, do the decent thing and contact us or say, "Hey, your service is no longer needed, and don't be using it as a public group." That is wrong for you to do that. Mayor Biss sat on the groups, came to some of the meeting, Bobby chaired the meetings. There was lots of people from different organizations that was there. None of them knew about the LEAP, because I contacted them. That's, "See, have you heard about this? What is this for?" And Mayor Biss, and you, Mike Alderman, Bobby Burns, promised me, "Well, no, Ms. Esther, we're not going to do anything until we take it to the community." And that hasn't happened. So until we start keeping our word, then we, as taxpayers, should not be paying to, for you to serve us. We need to figure out a way to get rid of you if you can't keep your word. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Mike Vasilko, who's followed by Betsy Wilson, and then Ina Gutierrez and her team from the Rebuilding Exchange.
Thank you very much. So the council didn't declare a animal shelter emergency, yet the budget proposes an overdesigned $7.5 million shelter that's estimated, probably going to end up being much more. The council didn't declare a skate park emergency, but the skate park will be built, I'm sure, and costs several million dollars once it's all said and done. The council didn't declare any other emergencies for non-urgent frivolous CIP projects. The only emergency declared by the council was declaration in April of this year, a climate emergency. The budget response to the climate emergency is a grand total of $1.75 million in three categories. You have $500,000 potentially for solar panels on some municipal buildings, not yet approved. You have $250,000 for a pilot program for sustainability grants for small businesses, yet not approved. And you have a $1 million pilot program to aid affordable housing retrofits, $100,000 of which is going to a for-profit general contractor in a non-bid situation. So $1.75 million is the proposed climate action, and yet, nothing is included as an incentive for Evanston's 30,000 taxpaying households.
15 seconds.
Okay. A lot of people ran over that, by far. Evanston's 30,000 taxpaying households, so $1.75 million is less than one-half of 1% of this $400 million budget. That's not an adequate response to the climate emergency you all signed on to. The fund, I am requesting, asking you to create, would provide financial resources for Evanston's 30,000 households to take immediate climate action. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Betsy Wilson, who will be followed by Ina Gutierrez and her group, and then Mary Rosinski.
Good evening, Betsy Wilson from the 1st Ward. And in reading the letter, the report shared with us by black city staff members, we've once again witnessed a massive failure in the way that the city treats its staff. We've seen this before. Last year, we learned of horrific maltreatment of staff members and the Parks Department and the Beachfront. And the city did commission an investigation that was fairly detailed and issued a report that I thought was impressive. However, we don't know what's happened since then. There's been no transparency in changes or implementing the recommendations in that report, and in fact, it's, looking at the budget this year, there doesn't, there seems to be a remarkable lack of funding for implementing those changes. I'm glad to hear that we're going to be conducting an investigation about the problems outlined in the recent report from the black staff members, but we need to do better. We need to do better not only in how we investigate it, but also in how we implement it and the transparency that we bring to that process. I'd also like to very briefly say that once again, the news blog Evanston Now has revealed itself to repeatedly publish racist and racist articles that don't comport with news standards. And it's appalling that the city supports that biased and counterfactual blog with not only our advertising money, but also with our subscription money. And we've done this for years and years, and this should be the last drop. It's time to stop. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ina Gutierrez with her group, followed by Mary Rosinski, and then Heather Bublik.
Mayor Biss, City Manager Stowe, members of the city council, thank you for having us. I'm Ina Gutierrez. I'm a 5th Ward resident and executive director of the Rebuilding Exchange located in the 2nd Ward. We are formerly the Evanston Rebuilding Warehouse. For time purposes, my staff members and board members and program graduates are here tonight to ask you to approve our ARPA funding request to acquire a warehouse and create a building trades training center. In the last five years, we have demonstrated that we can execute big ideas and have meaningful, sustainable impact in Evanston. We've quadrupled in size and budget and are currently a $3 million budget with 35 employees in two locations. We've doubled the amount of construction materials saved from landfills to more than 1,500 tons a year. We've grown seven times the number of people served in our workforce training programs for union apprenticeship and open shop employment, and are on track to serve 80 people this year, and expanded our networks to more than 30 building trades employers and 10 apprenticeship programs. In October of 2020, with support from the city of Evanston's West Evanston TIF district, we moved to our current square foot headquarters at 1245 Hartree, and it's a good problem to have, but we are out of room. And we want to push ourselves to grow even more. Why? Poverty rates are too high, which means we need to get more people into living wage employment. We know a lot of these folks in Evanston are working, they just aren't making enough to support themselves and their families. The Cook County minimum wage is $13.35 an hour, and a living wage, according to the MIT Living Wage Calculator, is $19.20 an hour. The second reason is there are too many young adults in Evanston without a career plan and barriers to growing building trades career pathways. Every year, 150 ETHS graduates leave without a plan for college or a career.
15 seconds.
And there are a lot of barriers for low-income folks to grow a building trades career pathway. And there are a lot of barriers for low-income folks to grow a building trades career pathway. There's also a lot of opportunity from employers, infrastructure bills, and locally rebuilding Ryan Field. How awesome would it be to have Evanston residents hired to build a stadium that drives economic development in our community? And so this urgency is why we want to acquire 626 Hartree and create a building trades training facility. We know it's a big ask, and we consider you to be a strong partner to our work. We think we can pull it off, but we need your help. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Rosinski, who will be followed by Heather Bublik, and then Kevin Brown.
Good evening and thank you. I would hope you do support the Rebuilding Warehouse. They are a phenomenal grassroots program, and I've watched them grow over the years. And they're just fabulous. I do want to thank you for your time, and I want to voice my support for the Black employees who are standing up against discrimination. The employees have been coming to council and speaking to the hurtful treatment they've heard endured over the years. Evanston has spent tens of thousands of dollars on equity and diversity training, but clearly it's not working because the culture in this city needs to change from the top down and the inside out. I do have confidence in our manager, Luke Stowe, to work on this and bring together groups of people to help really solve this problem once and for all. Thank you. Second, I want to talk about the budget. The process is flawed, the numbers are incorrect, meaningful question and answer discussions are absent because council members and the public are not being presented with the up-to-date and accurate information. We have a surplus of millions of dollars in addition to a 16% reserve, and over the year, there's been underbudgeting of certain revenue funds, which serves to create millions in unassigned funds, which are not necessarily discussed during budget time. And are these creating slush funds? We have to look at that. However, in spite of the extra funds, staff is recommending exorbitant amount of bonds for 2023. Evanston still has $400 million in debt between the 23-year bonds that are currently existing and our pension obligations. It's time to stop reckless spending in unnecessary and overpriced projects. Everyone needs to know how much the surplus is, and there should not be a rush to spend it all in one year. You can decide, so that you all can decide the best and most resourceful way to use those funds. Finally, it's essential that we fund 100% on the pensions. We need to get ahead of this increasing debt we accumulate by paying only 90% of their debt. Evanston has been financially irresponsible, and a number of years ago, we could have been paying 100%, and our payment today would only be $7 million. Instead, we are paying $21 million and going higher every year as we accumulate more and more debt on this. Second, UL doesn't need a light. Everyone will know they're here when they're here. I don't...
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Heather Bublik, who will be followed by Kevin Brown, and then Leslie Williams.
Good evening, Mayor Bis, Clerk Mendoza, members of the council. I'm Heather Bublik. My husband, Deandre, and I own Soul &amp; Smoke in the Fifth Ward. He's sorry he couldn't be here tonight. He's at the Midwest Pork Summit in St. Louis. But we are a MWBE business, are longtime Evanston residents, and we now own the building at 1601 Payne Street. Soul &amp; Smoke is a barbecue concept that is currently headquartered here in Evanston. We have a food truck, kiosks at the Time Out Market, and at Rockwell on the River. Our barbecue sauce is sold in all 44 Mariano's. And we currently offer to go and have a patio out of our Evanston kitchen. To date, we have received a lot of acclaim, including being on Good Morning America, Best New Restaurant Awards, and three stars from the Tribune. With that, has also brought a lot of anticipation around the opening of our first restaurant. We are asking for Tiff funding to redevelop two empty storefronts into our first full-service restaurant. We believe that our block on the Fifth Ward is truly where the flagship location of Soul &amp; Smoke should be. We've spent the last two years planning for it. It would certainly be a lot easier to take a second-generation restaurant space somewhere else, and, you know, space has more foot traffic, all of those things. But the Fifth Ward is our home, and we're excited for the changes that are coming, like the skate park and the Fifth Ward School. And we want to be a small part of it. We are excited for the changes, and we want to be a gathering spot for all of Evanston. We are in need of major structural foundation and masonry work in order to make the building function as a restaurant. The building is a 100-year-old former barn that hasn't had many upgrades in decades. Half of the space doesn't even have HVAC. $650,000 in funding from the Tiff, combined with the $822,000 we are putting into the redevelopment, will help us bridge the gap and make it possible for the restaurant to be located in Evanston. The grant will be, we are confident that the grant will be repaid within three years. We currently pay $250,000 a year in sales tax to Evanston. We fully expect that number to at least double when we become a full-service restaurant. We have no investors, it's just the two of us and our amazing team. But we truly hope and believe that Evanston believes in us and our neighborhood, and we want to be a permanent fixture in the Fifth Ward and can't fix this building alone. So thank you for your time, and we hope that we can stay.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kevin Brown, who will be followed by Leslie Williams, and then Heather Sweeney.
Mayor Bis, other elected city council members, city clerk, and city manager Stowe. I came here tonight to support the Black employees here at the City of Evanston, who submitted their reports regarding systemic racial discrimination at the city, which has been happening for decades. I was really quite saddened by the report, and even sadder after meeting with some of those employees about their fear of retaliation. I wanted to come here tonight to appeal to you as elected officials, as mayor, as city manager, that the time in this city for anti-Black behavior, anti-Black policies, anti-Black actions, that time needs to end now. I was here before this council, three years ago, almost to the day. I was terminated on November 15, 2019. What we are seeing in this report is an affirmation of all of the things that I had been talking about from 2012 until my termination, all of those things. I've encouraged these employees to acquire legal counsel, to support that cause. But you have an opportunity, as elected officials, to do something, and as city manager, to resolve this in a way that not only fixes some of these challenges, the racial discrimination challenges that are occurring in this city today, but to also resolve this in a way that does not allow for retaliation. These individuals are courageous, but because of the things that have happened in this city in the past, they are fearful of retaliation. They have families to take care of, they have their own responsibilities. But you are an elected official that has the power to do the right thing this time. And I'm encouraging you, the city that has voted upon a reparations program and has lauded that across the country, when on the night of November 15, when that was voted on, I received my termination letter. What we're asking you, and what Brother Bennett Johnson talked about earlier, is that no more perfunctory behavior. Please, please do the right thing. Please support these staff members that work hard for this community. Please do the right thing. That's what we're asking you to do tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Leslie Williams, who will be followed by Heather Sweeney, and then Marty Kless.
It's going to be hard to go after that. Clearly, you've all seen the devastating report and the call to action issued by the Organization of African-American Employees of the City of Evanston. They document racial disparities in pay, promotion, and discipline, cases of Black employees who were denied job opportunities only to see less qualified whites given them, unequal work assignments, and retaliation against Black employees who complain of unfair treatment. And until today, we have not heard any response from the City of Evanston to these allegations. This is unacceptable. Because, as Mr. Brown said, these employees fear retaliation, they've asked me to read a statement on their behalf. The last paragraph of the letter, written to the City of Evanston by the Black Employees Group, notes that "in Section 1 of the 2019 Resolution, Commitment to End Structural Racism and Achieve Racial Equity, the City Council of Evanston hereby acknowledges its own 'history' of racially motivated policies and practices, apologizes for the damage this 'history' has caused the city, and declares that it stands against white supremacy." I question the use of the word "history" in that resolution. "We are asking that the City of Evanston stand on those same words and acknowledge, address, and repair the social harms that have been inflicted on Black employees internally. Dismantle your own system of oppression." This should not be a difficult ask. Action item number 20 is to listen. They have told you exactly what is needed. Simply implement that very reasonable action plan that the employees have provided to you, not an action plan that you develop. Black employees are no longer interested in the City of Evanston figuring things out, as history has shown us that that does not work well. You do this by allocating funding in the current budget toward implementing the racial action change plan. As President of the Community Alliance for Better Government, I join our members in saying that we are committed to holding the City of Evanston accountable. We are demanding funding, transparency, and accountability to address internal racial equity. This will not go away, and we will not go away. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Heather Sweeney, who will be followed by Marty Kless, and then Reverend Michael Neighbors.
My name is Heather Sweeney. I'm speaking as a resident of the Fourth Ward about the report compiled by the Black Employees of the City of Evanston. I just want to echo the things that have been said, and also say that I believe the report. And while I'm deeply concerned, I'm not surprised. Unless we intentionally address racism and other forms of oppression, it will be there. It's literally how our society is set up. So I see this as a call to action and opportunity for the city to make change. And the sad part, as we heard, is that the city and probably close to every municipality and organization in the United States has been there before, where people have brought serious racial problems to light, only for those experiences to be dismissed or brushed under the rug. And the cost is too high for that to happen again. I want to see our elected officials and city decision-makers demonstrate they're taking this seriously, and I request that this report be an agenda item for every city council meeting in the foreseeable future, so that you can give an update on the actions being taken. The transparency, urgency, and thoughtfulness are all critical to demonstrate the seriousness with which you take this report, for the sake of the city employees and the health of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Marty Kless, who will be followed by Reverend Michael Neighbors, and then Trish Connelly.
Evening. My name is Marty Kless. I am an Evanston resident and also a partner in Cornrion Hospitality, which operates Taku Diablo Lulu's Five and Dime and Blue Horse Tavern. I'm here tonight for two items up for consideration. The first is the UL signage at 1603 Orienton, and I ask that you guys support this request and not overcomplicate the matter. I was watching the PND meeting from home, and I know there's some concern about this good faith agreement and some comments about Northbrook. Well, that's where I grew up, so you were talking about no standards. Northbrook has standards, okay? I know that. I know you meant it in jest, but I contest that UL was really a good neighbor back then, and they've grown, and I'm sure they will be here. So we need them. My restaurants need them, my tenants need them. I think it's a win-win for the city, and, you know, we got to act on it and recruit it. We don't want to lose them, right? We don't want to scare them away. And I really would be amiss if we miss this opportunity, because I think they will be blowing away with their support, their initiatives, and their actions that they said they will do. I have complete faith they will do that. The second item up here tonight to talk about and ask that you support is Soul &amp; Smoke's requests to facilitate their restaurant expansion. Again, we need to recruit visitors to Evanston to spend their dollars, and having a critical mass of restaurants is a great way to do that. But more importantly, the council really needs to support local businesses, and these proprietors, Heather and Deandre, really demonstrated not only their proven concept, but their commitment to the community. So I think we have a perfect opportunity here with the Tiff funds, that we should put this money to use and really kind of help revitalize this Fifth Ward. So I ask you guys to support that. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Reverend Michael Neighbors, who will be followed by Trish Connelly, and then Darlene Cannon.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am Michael Neighbors, Ninth Ward resident of Evanston, and president of the Evanston North Shore Branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. In this position, I have been asked to read a statement at tonight's council meeting. First of all, I want to share that there is a mission with regard to our branch of the NAACP. It is to achieve equity, political rights, and social inclusion by advancing policies and practices that expand human and civil rights, elimination of discrimination, and accelerating the well-being, education, and economic security of Black people and all persons of color. The following words are directly from Black employees of Evanston. There were several disturbing and deeply concerning stories that we shared in the letter and action plan represented by Black employees with the City of Evanston. But that was just a snapshot. There are more employees, both past and present, that have stories that were not shared. They are watching what happens and are willing to speak up. Speaking up is a difficult thing. Employees have expressed concerns about retaliation for speaking the truth. This cannot happen. The employees that were courageous enough to do something about the longstanding and equitable workplace they have experienced need to be supported. As stated in their letter, the goal of this Black employee group is to seek acknowledgement of disparate actions and to request actionable remedies that ensure fairness and equality in the dispersment of existing policies and practices that address the internal culture of privilege and disparities in employment practices. The NAACP Evanston is committed to supporting City of Evanston Black employees and is willing to help encourage productive discussion toward implementation of the action plan that was provided. In support of these employees, the NAACP is demanding that the City of Evanston publicly commit to acknowledging the issues shared and addressing racial inequity within the organization. Countless Black employees have watched issues get ignored or swept aside for decades. This cannot happen, not anymore. This will not go away. Will not go away. Please acknowledge and commit to doing better, City of Evanston. Eyes are watching and waiting.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Trisha Connelly, who will be followed by Darlene Cannon, and then Eileen Hogan Heineman.
I first would like to say I stand in solidarity with the City of Evanston Black employees. And I, with what others have said, look very forward to getting updates, like, next city council meeting, tell us how this is working and what's going on. That would be transparent, that would be right, and people everywhere in this town needs to know what's happening with that. Secondly, I'm going to talk about the budget. It feels like the City of Evanston has issues around financial infidelity. Yeah, I said it. Yeah, I said it. The public has asked questions that get deferred to someone that's not responsible for the budget, which also delays the answer. An example of this recently was there was a reference made to the 2022 bonds. We were then told we didn't issue bonds in 2022, but Laura Biggs, we had to wait for her to tell us why that was indicated in the financials. Information was initially shared that showed we had $4.1 million in surplus. Specifically, folks, that means unassigned funds, extra money. But later, we were told that that was a typo, and it was actually $14.1 million.
Fifteen seconds.
Really?
Yeah.
It was confusing to find out where the $14.1 million was coming from and to get answers on what the projected surplus is likely to be by the end of this year. We should know that now, so that we can be in conversation with you folks on where we think the greatest need on spending money we have is. Please fund the police and fire pensions now. That is also an equitable thing to do on behalf of our residents and the most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Darlene Cannon, who will be followed by Eileen Hogan-Heineman, which I believe will conclude our in-person portion of the public comment.
Thank you, Darlene Cannon, Second Ward. I stand in solidarity with my brothers and sisters. We have a race problem here in the City of Evanston, and it is deeply rooted in systemic issues in the workplace throughout the entire city. It's based on the policies and politics of the city that is only enforced on some, but not all. The report from the Black employee has shined a light on the blatant racism and microaggressions that many Blacks who work for the city have been forced to endure for years, maybe even decades. Evanston has a problem with providing an equitable workplace for Black employees. While continuously touting Evanston as one of the most livable cities, as we boast about the wonderful diversity we have here, it's often described as utopia, also known as Heavenston. The employees' grievances are not new. The Black employees' report deserves a public response from the mayor, council, and city manager. The council should provide a plan of action to ensure that future harm is prevented. We must be ensured that the discriminatory practices of management will be stopped immediately. Failure to do so will only prove that Heavenston, the so-called most livable city that uses a lens of equity, that it works towards equity, will be considered hollow and performative. In order to have equity, we must have truth. We must start funding, properly funding, our fire and police pension. It's not a loan.
Fifteen seconds.
It's a liability. It works like a credit card, and interest keeps occurring. When you pay the bare minimum, which is what we've been doing for a very long time, then this is the result. Had we been fully funding the fire and police pensions, along with paying, we would be paying $7 million instead of $21 million, which would leave us about $14 million to fund affordable housing, cover water and sewage increases, and replace lead pipes throughout the city.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Eileen Hogan-Heineman, and then we'll go to the online commenters.
Good evening, Mayor Biss, Clerk Mendoza, City Manager Stowe, and all of the council members. I'm Eileen Hogan-Heineman. I'm the manager of community outreach at the Equity Institute of YWCA Evanston North Shore. We are grateful to the Black employees who gathered and then shared their experiences and the experiences of many of their colleagues with the rest of the community, perhaps at great risk to themselves. We were saddened to read their first-person testimonies outlining the climate that exists for many Black City of Evanston employees. YWCA recognizes the imperative toward action that was lifted up in this powerful report, and we support the needs identified with respect to required education of all city employees and the need to adopt transformative actions which will lead to systemic changes. It's up to us to insist on transparency, all of us, and also to insist on speed in responding to the issues that have been raised to make the city a more equitable place for its Black employees. As a longtime community partner of the City of Evanston, YWCA Evanston North Shore is ready to help in whatever ways are needed for the process ahead. We just need to start moving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, moving to the online commenters, we'll begin with Sarah Bogan, who will be followed by Nick Davis, and then Kathleen McCann. Is Sarah Bogan in the Zoom?
Hi, I'm here.
Yep, go ahead.
I'm speaking on behalf of Evanston Fight for Black Lives, on Resolution H2. Two and a half years ago, Evanston Fight for Black Lives created an extensive document breaking down how to reorganize the current system of public safety in the City of Evanston. The plan is clear, well-organized, and based on sound and thorough data. It includes an entire section on how to begin the defunding process that was written by an expert in the field and addresses many of the issues LEAP is being hired to address. The city has not taken our work seriously. Maybe you think we're just a bunch of kids who don't know what we are really thinking about, or don't have the experience needed to seriously weigh in. Our organizers are teachers, students, nonprofit workers, artists, scientists, farmers, and environmentalists. Their board members, volunteers, legal aid interns, clergy people, and active community members. They have college degrees in public policy, education, human rights, political science, criminal justice, biology, neuroscience, law, carceral systems, and social work. We are from the generation with the most available and fastest-growing knowledge and most inclusive politics. We are intelligent, and we represent many of the people the city talks about wanting input from. The city has not taken the work of their own employees and representatives seriously. First Ward Alderman Claire Kelly has been doing the work you would hire LEAP to do herself. And two years ago, Seventh Ward Alderman Eleanor Revell undertook a project to analyze 911 data with a human services committee. The exact purpose of LEAP is potential work within the city. We don't need more consultants and more wasted time. We need to take action based on all the data that's already been collected. In the past year, many of our organizers have moved out of Evanston, in part to return to their universities or to pursue full-time jobs, and in part because this city is not an affordable place to live for working-class people in these times. However, do not mistake this for a lack of care or stake in the future of Evanston, specifically as it relates to policing. Our homes and families are here. We have done the work that the city has run around in circles trying to recreate, all while dismissing and ignoring what has already been put in front of them. We've expressed a number of times that we've created a working document the city can use to build off of, expand, and alter to become a realistic tool. We have done this for free and continue to do so. We were a part of the reimagining committee, and sat through meeting after meeting where very little was accomplished, and most time was spent planning on how we would begin to approach the issue rather than actually starting to approach it. The committee felt more like a sticker the city could use to say they're committed to change rather than actually making change. Hiring an outside program made up almost entirely of current and former police officers is unnecessary and counterintuitive to the needs of Evanston's most vulnerable populations. Evanston professes value for youth and young people and input from all community members. When young people choose to step up and take action where they see injustice, our experiences, both lived and learned, are minimized. We are told to change the system from the inside and to go through the proper channels to get things accomplished. EFBL has been and is currently on the inside and part of the channels, and the groundwork we have already laid is still being ignored. We demand that the city take seriously the work of its empowered young people and invest in the community that is accountable to. We know Evanston, we are Evanston, and several community members and organizations have already started this work for free. Our attempts to seriously engage this process with the city officials have been stalled for too long, and we once again offer the intellectual and emotional labor of EFBL and other community organizations as a foundational starting point for turning Evanston into the community it desires to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Nick Davis, who will be followed by Kathleen McCann, and then Gail Schechter.
Good evening, everybody. Speaking on behalf of EFBL in solidarity with Evanston's Black employees, many of us are lifelong Evanstonians, and as such have been here most of our lives about how diverse and accepting Evanston is. We've also lived our lives as examples of the hypocrisy of those viewpoints. While Evanston is diverse and accepting relative to other cities, the bar for a constitution in accepting or diverse city is not very high in a country founded on slavery and genocide. The vestiges of white supremacy practices ingrained in this country were shown to not be vestiges but fully alive and well-practiced within our city's government. On November 2, 2022, Black employees working for the City of Evanston released an entire packet with personal accounts, qualitative and quantitative data that proved the city has been discriminating against Black employees for years. As Gina Cash's Evanston Roundtable article points out, more than half the employees surveyed have worked for the city for at least 10 years. They specifically, excuse me, they specifically answer to Black actions that the city committed and continues to commit have only formally been addressed in public form at the beginning of this meeting. That's 12 days. These employee experiences have not been addressed in a proper way. The report includes everything from widespread status disparities and nepotism in hiring and career advancement opportunities, to microaggressions, blatant anti-blackness, and white supremacist ideologies on and off the clock. The city is not a giant puppet, the city is not giant puppeteer hands in the sky. The city is made up of individual prejudices and biases that inform their everyday actions. We demand that individuals responsible be held accountable and a manner that is acceptable to those they have harmed. EFBL unequivocally supports the Black employees at the City of Evanston. We stand in solidarity with you, and we urge the city to address your grievances with justice, care, and intentionality, as there would be no City of Evanston without you. That was on behalf of EFBL. On behalf of myself, real quick, I want to add that for over a decade, I'm sure even before that, this is how long I've been paying attention, that the city's had issues where we allow people to engage in discrimination, harassment, and ways of often amounts of violence and intimidation, and we allow people doing these behaviors to give little to no consequence, and anyone wondering why it continues to happen. And to reiterate the issue brought up earlier, legitimizing Evanston now and their watered-down journalism to support trying to publicly shame people who are behind on rent, as if rent is affordable anywhere in this country, here's another example of how a majority-white, self-proclaimed progressive city is not actually being very progressive at all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kathleen McCann, who will be followed by Gail Schechter, and then Dorian Price.
Hi there.
Hello, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. My name's Kathleen McCann. I'm a resident of the Seventh Ward, and I'm just here to support Black employees who are speaking up about issues in the workplace, and I urge the council to follow the action plan that they developed. I also just wanted to say, you know, as others have already spoken on, that pension funds for the police and fire should be fully funded, and thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Gail Schechter, who will be followed by Dorian Price.
Thank you. It is clear that the Human Resources Department, for one, has failed its Black employees first and foremost. It has also treated staff inequitably based on race and gender, as reflected last year with the lifeguard scandal. Moreover, the city has conducted recent hiring searches of major staff positions in a haphazard, often closed-door manner. The answer is not hiring another racial equity manager, whose position was eliminated anyway, or to conduct more internal studies. It's fortuitous that this is budget time, because the City of Evanston can take steps immediately to remediate its own workplace by outsourcing all human relations functions to a vetted outside contractor. Such a contractor, also skilled in diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice practices, would handle confidential employee relations matters, oversee searches and hiring, represent the city in searching for improved employee benefits, ensure compliance with all applicable labor laws, and conduct a full equity audit of employment policies and practices. Outsourcing has many advantages, chief of which is impartiality, expertise, and accountability for results. I suggest that the city manager consult with the Society for Human Resources Management and the Government Alliance for Racial Equity on next steps, including on drafting a request for qualifications to HR firms. This doesn't have to be permanent, but Evanston's internal human resources system is broken and needs to be fixed. Outsourcing is tantamount to putting trust in a receiver for a specific amount of time who will rectify the discriminatory wrongs that have pervaded the civic center for decades once and for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dorian Price. Is Ms. Price in the Zoom?
Sorry. I found the unmute, so thank you.
Great.
I, yeah, it was brilliant in describing a complicated situation and the approaches that can and must be taken to rectify the situation and alternative methods if those situations, if those remedies aren't effective enough. It all goes back to, initially, the discussions around the budget and resident input, and Betty Esther's comment about a group that she was part of the formation group, and I attended as a resident, and the number of residents attending was basically one or two people at a time. So it's a significant change to deviate from that and ignore all the things that could have been done correctly, had it been formed on the basis of inclusive and complete participation, at least from my opinion, and limited participation with that group as a resident. In terms of what's going on in the discussions, it's outrageous that we're still discussing, or that it's discussed, that we should be at a place where the wrongs and injustices to our Black community is just augmented and worsened by the perpetuation. And lastly, in terms of the budget, a better, more participation, and, let's see, why not build Health and Human Services with Homeless Prevention Grantmaker to preserve affordable housing stock, to help seniors age at pace with affordable rental units supplemented with ARPA funds? Can the Evanston Animal Shelter develop integrated programs to synergize with Health and Human Services, Health and Well-Being programs? And lastly, why not reestablish Evanston Township to expand access in programs like neighboring townships? Are there now cost savings or synergies post-COVID-19 that we didn't know before when Evanston Township was disbanded? So I would very much appreciate that the city approaches equity in a serious manner, including all people who are at disadvantage, and that includes climate change, if I may finish. And with regard to climate change, we know that the low-income or vulnerable are the worst affected, and so they should be the first on the list with regard to climate change initiatives, and that's been not been somewhat addressed. Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for the evening and brings us to special orders of business. The first item, SP1, is for discussion, so I think we should begin there. Does anyone have any issues they want to raise, either suggestions or questions or discussion items relative to the capital improvement program? Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to staff, and everyone who's put in so much work on this.
Kind of order, just, we need to move it. I move item SP1. Councilmember Reed moves that we discuss, item SP1?
Yes.
Councilmember, for one second. The item is now on the floor, which is good, because it gives me some time to futz with the timer. And now, Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now that it's official, yeah, thanks to staff for putting in the work on this budget. I think we're getting close. I would like to include Fitzsimmons Park in this, in the 2023 capital plan. Fitzsimmons Park is one of the two Fourth Ward parks that haven't made the cut in the draft in front of us tonight. The other one is Larimer Park. Larimer is on for $975,000. I understand that public engagement in that, in that process is going to take some time, and we might not be able to get to that project anyway, even if we had enough money. But the work we're doing at Fitzsimmons Park is only budgeted at $125,000. Fitzsimmons Park is the park immediately south of Nichols School. That one's particularly important to residents in that neighborhood who cannot or do not choose to use Gray Park, which is at the corner of Ridge and Main. A lot of the residents of Albany Care avail themselves of Gray Park. I have no problem with that. They are Evanston residents, entitled to use- They are Evanston residents, entitled to use the park, but some families do feel more comfortable going to the next closest park, which is Fitzsimmons Park, desperately in need of some improvement. And so, in order to allow families in that neighborhood a place to enjoy Evanston Parks, I'd like to include Fitzsimmons Park in the budget for next year. That's all for now, thank you.
Is there further discussion on the capital improvement program? Councilmember Rebell.
Well, I also appreciate all the work staff has done and developing a list of proposed projects to defer, I think was very helpful. One of the projects is in my ward, and I'm sorry to see it postponed for a year, but I appreciate it's a big budget item, big-ticket item, so I, I understand why we're deferring it, and we are going to be continuing with the community engagement to plan the renovations. So I think that's going to be a very exciting opportunity for my residents. So I will look forward to Independence Park being renovated in August 2024.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes, I want to be sure that I'm not missing something, but are alley pavements listed here in the CIP plan, or I guess the capital improvement plan?
Members of the City Council, my name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. Yes, the alley pavement projects are included in the capital improvement program. They generally rely very little on, there is a small, or is a portion commitment of the general obligation bonds, but they're largely funded out of other funding sources.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear enough. What I was really asking for, I'm in the packet, I'm wondering if they were listed, you know, we have the projects, the ones that got the green light, the ones that, you know, are in red, is, are alleys listed, the alleys that will be paved for 2023 listed here?
Yes.
And if they are, where, where am I missing that?
If you go past the text memo, there's an attachment A, and that contains a list of projects that staff understands based on feedback from the city council that should be included in the capital improvement program. And then there's an attachment B that follows, that is what staff understands should not be included in the CIP. So if you go to Row 43, you attach today.
I guess what I'm really trying to ensure is that the alley adjacent to the new living room is going to be paved. I just want to be sure that that is included here for 2023.
Yes, that is the alley north of Mulford, east of Elmwood.
Correct, I'm sorry, what page is that on?
23 of 574.
23, okay, thank you, thank you very much. I will yield for now.
Councilmember Hatakakis.
I have one quick question, and I don't know if this was for you, Laura, or for Hitash. So based on the deferred projects, we have 11 million in go-bonds that we wouldn't be issuing in, in item SP2, which, with the, what's the overall impact on the budget number? Is it just strictly the lack of go-bonds, or how is that reflected in SP2? That's my question.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Can you just clarify the question, please?
Yeah, so I was curious, so looking at SP, I'm getting a little bit ahead of ourselves. So when we look at SP2, and we have the revised budget at 400 million, is this taking to account all the deferred projects?
The 400 million is based on, I think, the 24 million less $2 million, which we, so, yeah, right now, it's taking into account all of those, which were originally proposed.
Okay, so, and the reason then why it didn't drop as much is because we're just not issuing bonds?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Is there further discussion on the CIP? Councilmember Kelly.
So I would just ask again, I've sent a list to City Manager Stowe of cuts. I think there's some areas, we don't, it doesn't have to be all or nothing, I think even like the Ecology Center, we could consider doing just what we really have to do, given that next year we are going to be facing somewhat of a recession, and rates will be high when we look at issuing bonds. So I'm, I'll share that with staff also, but I think there are a lot of areas where we can cut, where we're considering allocating funding. And again, I'd ask that we look at, again, at the square footage price of the animal shelter. I love the animal shelter, but I think we can, we don't need to be spending top dollar on square footage price for the Evanston Animal Shelter. I think we can try to bring ourselves more in line to expenditures for other animal shelters. So I would just ask that we really try to come back again and reduce this even more. And again, I'll share some of the areas, I won't go into detail on all of them now, but I think there's a lot of areas that we've, we're allocating funding for that we could scale back. Thank you.
Is there further discussion or questions? No one is seeking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with four minutes left.
Yeah, I just want to highlight for Eighth Warders, some of the, really, you know, take two minutes to highlight for Eighth Warders, some of the really important things that are happening, this being proposed here for the CIP budget. You know, one of the biggest complaints that I've gotten as Eighth Ward Councilmember is lighting in James Park. A lot of folks have been concerned about a lack of proper lighting in James Park, and this budget makes an investment in that lighting, making that, that part of town and the park safer for residents 24, throughout the day with the new lighting. And so I, I want to note that, and I just really want to thank staff for the deep consideration here with the capital improvement budget. I think this council and, and many others, I don't want to take away from other councils, but certainly I want to highlight that this council is really committed to making sure that we're funding the, the work of the city. And I think we're going to have some more discussions tonight as we get into the budget ordinance. Some of that, making sure that we have funding to be responsible, ensure that we're providing the services that residents expect, means that, you know, we got to make some sacrifices, and some of those sacrifices to ensure that we're meeting the goals of the residents, whether it be for capital improvement or other areas, you know, as I said, are going to take sacrifice, and I'm excited that we're making these investments, and excited to have the tougher discussion a little bit later. Thank you.
Again, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly, who also has four minutes left.
So just to reiterate what I said, but I'm seeing here that the Civic Center window replacement for $3 million is still on, I thought that had come off. So I'm a little bit surprised, especially given, like, we haven't seen any supporting quotes or bids or inspection reports. And I think it was, I thought it was already decided that that would come off, or else a very much smaller portion would be allocated for just the windows that really need to be replaced and that need to be open that can't be fixed. So I'm sort of surprised to still see that on there.
That, the Civic Center replacement is not included in the list of projects, none of the Civic Center projects were based on feedback from the council. Attachment B is the projects that we are not doing.
Are there any further discussions on CIP? Councilmember Burns.
Park is in here, right? Laura, that's it, that's all, thank you.
Sorry.
Two minutes and 20 seconds left, because I'm really slow on the draw here. Councilmember Reed.
Yes. Okay, one thing that I would like to see in the CIP that is not, I don't know if Paul is here, not that I'm asking Paul to come out and explain this now, but I've been working with the Arts Council and Economic Development to develop an art park under the Mulford Viaduct in an area that is extremely underproductive, it's a dead-end street, and I think we have some, for a very affordable price, can get a really neat project done. Councilmember Newsma advocated to get a park moved, bumped up from, I think, List B to List A, and I, too, would like to see, you know, before we actually pass this, because it's just for discussion now, if we can work with Paul and the Arts Council, get an estimate, I'm presuming it's, you know, for the actual installation, we're probably talking under $100,000 for, for the art park, and so I'd like to see that included here if possible. And so I don't know the mechanism for that. As I said, it's gone to Art Council, it's been discussed there, it has been discussed with Economic Development Committee as well, and there is, I think, some interest in Economic Development Committee. And so we're close to the final stages, and I think we can get this done in 2023, and so I just want to make sure that it's budgeted for, and so, Mr. Mayor, would you prefer, this is just for discussion, is a motion to amend fine, or to bring this back? And Councilmember Newsma, I know you also have a, maybe we can...
Yeah, I mean, I would recommend approaching it the way Councilmember Newsma did. The request has been made, and I think the, you know, that, then you can work with staff between now and when it would come for action to see if we can make that happen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sufferton.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to note with Cartwright Park, there are issues with the playground equipment and also flooding issues, and I'd like to make a note for staff that the flooding issues create a safety concern, because there is no sidewalk on either side of the street on that part of Grant. So the flooded path is the only means of pedestrian traffic on that part of Grant. So I'd like to request that we take a look at bifurcating that, and I understand we all need to make sacrifices, and that's, has to do with playground equipment, that's fine, but I'd like to, some consideration of the safety concerns, since there is no sidewalk on either side of Grant there, if it would be possible to include path renovations to mitigate that flooding. And I understand, again, like, we all got to make sacrifices here, and that's the playground equipment, that's fine, but, but the path is a, is a safety concern.
Thank you very much. I think that now concludes the discussion on item SP1. We've had some, I think, useful feedback for staff, and thanks to everyone for their engagement in this discussion. So the next, SP2 through SP9 are all budget-related ordinances that are on the agenda for introduction. So someone could make a motion to, for all of them at once, or for some portion of them, but the next, I guess, eight items on the agenda are all kind of parallel and bundled together.
I'll move item SP2, Ordinance 99022, the 2023 budget, and I think the rest of them after this, we can move together.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage, Ordinance 99022. Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Is there any discussion?
A little bit.
Councilmember Reed.
I have two amendments to the budget. I haven't spoken to everyone personally about this, but we've certainly had discussion about it at the last meeting, and I think there was support. And so, one, I think increasing the motor fuel tax by two cents would bring in over 500,000, but, you know, conservatively, $500,000 worth of revenue that we could dedicate toward our CARP goals, particularly in relation to green infrastructure. And so I would like to amend our budget to include a two-cent increase in the motor fuel tax, which, just for folks who weren't around at the last meeting, our current motor fuel tax is set at three cent per gallon, which is lower than our largest neighbor, Chicago. Chicago's motor fuel tax is set at eight cents per gallon. Our neighbor Skokie, for example, has set it also three cent per gallon, but I don't think we need to follow the lead of Skokie all the time, so. I move that we increase our motor fuel tax by, I move that we suspend the rule, so I don't have to write this down. But no, I, seriously, I do move that we suspend the, I'm sorry, I move that we increase the motor fuel tax by two cent per gallon.
So let me just, before you write it down, or you can work on it if you want, but just, Mr. Cummings, do you mind weighing in? Is, are the, is the, are the, are the taxes a part of our budget? I mean, obviously, the property tax levy isn't a separate set of ordinances, but is there a piece of the budget that can be amended to change the motor fuel tax?
Good evening, members of City Council, City Manager Stowe, Clerk Mandels, and Nicholas Cummings Corporation Council. Yes, the revenue portions of the budget are just as amendable as the City Council's desire to remove items from the budget. Previous discussions behind the scenes have led to the ordinance that is before you today since the budget hearing. It has been amended without a proper motion based upon the feedback from the council. So now we actually have a formal motion to amend the revenue portion, and that is proper.
All right, in that case, if you can...
Yes.
Let's see, is there...
Reducing it to writing.
Is there, now that I've given Councilmember Reed this extra time to draft...
Maybe Councilmember Reed wants to include several motions in one email?
Yes, I do have several. I, I'm going to get this one off, and then maybe I'll pass the baton to someone else to discuss, and then I'll write them all up.
I'll second this one, in the interest of funding additional CARP progress.
Well, maybe I'll include two. So the other, so that's $500,000 for the two-cent in motor fuel tax, and then if we were to make a, another $5 increase in the wheel tax for 2023, that would give us another $200,000 to $250,000 annually, again, that could go right into, again, supporting our CARP goals and green transportation here in the city. And again, that $5 increase in the, in the wheel tax would also, well, that would begin to bring us into parity with Chicago's wheel tax.
Mr. Cummings?
I was just reminded by our CFO that a separate ordinance wouldn't necessarily be required to make this amendment, because we have to change the city code to reflect that in addition to changing the budget and revenue. So just wanted to make the council aware of that as well, that if we do make that amendment, yes, it is amending the budget ordinance, but a separate ordinance would be necessary in order to change the city code to reflect the change in the cost.
Yes, thank you. And I think we can make this amendment here, and it's, you know, crossing out a, you know, a number on both of those ordinances, and so I think staff can certainly have those revisions that would accompany the change in the budget for us for the next meeting, and we can get that done in a timely fashion.
Right, so, yeah, right, so logistically, there will be an ordinance for introduction to amend the city code at the next regular city council meeting, and then followed by action. So by the time the budget kicks in, yes, it would be in effect, but to Councilmember Reed's point, there's a separate ordinance that need to be, that needs to be prepared.
Okay, so as I understand it, though I have not received it in writing yet...
You're, you're getting it now.
Ah, well, then I guess I can just stall for a second. Well, actually, while I'm stalling, so I just, I want to show my cards here, I'm uneasy with the, with two things, not necessarily opposed, but as I'm contemplating this, I'm uneasy with two things. One is just the abruptness near the end of the budget, near the end of the whole year, but the other is, you know, we've had, particularly on a staff level, some real analysis about the regressive and inequitable ramifications of our fines and fees, and, you know, I'm, I'm as interested in moving away from carbon as anybody, and I'm as interested in raising revenue for CARP goals, but I'm also mindful of our internal commitment to work on the distributional ramifications of our fines and fees. And so, Luke, is there anybody from staff available tonight who can speak to that work and the connection between it and these ideas? Councilmember Reed?
Yes, I certainly hear and appreciate your concerns there, Mr. Mayor. I, again, we're talking about a two-cent increase in the, the motor fuel tax, you know, I, you know, if people just think taxes generally are regressive, that's, that's fine, but I don't think a two-cent increase in the wheel tax, I'm sorry, in the motor fuel tax is a regressive tax. You know, again, some of our neighbors have a higher motor fuel tax... You know, again, some of our neighbors have a higher motor fuel tax, and to ensure that, you know, those same communities that, I think that these funds can also, we can get creative with the use of these funds. You know, we know that the same communities that are most, that could be, in what you're saying, most impacted by this policy, are also most impacted by our lack of action in climate, in our climate resiliency planning. And so I think making these investments, getting this funding from the entire city, and being able to make these investments that will improve the lives of folks who live in the fifth ward, that live in my ward, where my ward has the lowest air quality in the city, where we have folks who have longer commute times than some other folks. I think we can take this and make a substantial investment here to make life better for Evanston residents, make the air healthier, and ensure that we're doing it in a progressive way that protects our environment.
Did you second the motion, Councilmember?
I have not seconded the wheel tax.
Not, yeah, but he seconded...
I have seconded the motor fuel tax increase.
All right, so notwithstanding the single email, it sounds like there's two motions. A motion from Councilmember Reed, first, to, I've sent this now to everybody on council, to increase the motor fuel tax by two cents, seconded by Councilmember Newsma, and a motion by Councilmember, well, so, there's been a motion by Councilmember Reed to increase the motor fuel tax by two cents, seconded by Councilmember Newsma. Is there any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Hatakakis.
So I'm just a little bit concerned that it will be affecting our working-class citizens, people who have to commute and drive places. I also don't know exactly how that will affect our gas stations and their business. You know, you already have people, you know, who'll drive across town to get cheaper gas, and I don't know if that'll be a negative impact to, I don't know, I think there's at least two or three gas stations, not sure.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Hatakakis mentioned, I'm just concerned about the two cent we are taxing on top of taxing. While it's a green initiative, I so appreciate that. I think it's going to hurt those on which we're trying to help on a green sense, but we're going to economically impact. I'm wondering if my fellow council member would be willing to look at a one-cent increase.
Councilmember Revel.
Well, I would second Councilmember Harris's suggestion that we just look at a one-cent increase to the motor fuel tax, if Councilmember Reed is amendable.
Well, you're in luck. No one else is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with two minutes left.
Thank you. I hear, I hear what my colleagues are saying. One, to the point about the gas stations, I'm, you know, not super concerned about the profits of BP or Exxon or those companies, but I, and I, this is a two-cent increase. We will be below what, where Chicago is with this two-cent increase. This will bring a decent amount of revenue for the city to implement our climate action plans, and I think that's an important investment for us to make. And so I hear the call for a one-cent increase. I'd like to hold firm at two cent to ensure that we're garnering appropriate revenue.
I think Kara Pratt, our Sustainability and Resilience Coordinator, just entered the room.
Good evening. I'd like to speak very briefly about regressive taxes in terms of the fuel tax. So certainly, research would show that mostly low-income folks would have the type of vehicle that would be most subject to this type of tax, as typically, a more gas-guzzling vehicle would have to consume more gasoline at the pump, and therefore, this would be exactly the definition of a regressive tax, where a lower-income person is disproportionately paying a tax versus higher-income folks, which might have already purchased an electric vehicle or might have a more fuel-efficient vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No one else is asking to speak for the first time. We go back to Councilmember Harris with four and a half minutes left.
I just appreciate your statements, and I will pass three gas stations trying to find the cheapest one. So while I live in Evanston, I will go to Skokie if it's cheaper, and so will our residents, and we want to retain our Evanston's purchasing gas here. And again, it's half a dozen in one hand, six in another, but I think we need to do the right thing, and if we want to do two cent, look at that later. I'm going to still ask for my council member to consider one cent.
I'm happy to make a friendly emotion, a friendly motion, or amendment to my motion to make it one cent.
Thank you.
So I think we're now entering into the procedural thing that I am of the highest propensity of messing up. So I think what's happening is Councilmember Reed is moving to amend his amendment?
Friendly amendment, to make it instead of two cent, one cent, a substitute, whatever you want to call it.
Oh, excellent. This is, we can have your votes.
Sure.
So Councilmember Reed moves, makes a substitute amendment, replacing the two-cent motor fuel tax increase with a one-cent motor fuel tax increase, which means that if this, if that were seconded and passed, that would be, we wouldn't have to take another vote after that. Right, Mr. Cummings?
I'm sorry, I was doing some other research.
So he's made a, he's made a substitute amendment?
Yes.
And my assertion, and just speaking out loud to educate myself about what I should do in a second, is that if that motion is seconded and passes, that we're done then, that we don't need to then vote on an amended amendment?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to Councilmember Reed's substitute motion?
Second.
Councilmember Harris seconds Councilmember Reed's substitute motion. Is there any discussion on what is now a proposed one-cent increase to the motor fuel tax?
And what I want to do is, I don't have anything to change, just want to, with our finance department, get, as this comes back, just have some estimates, if they can run some estimates of what the revenue might be with this one-cent increase. There, I think our website may be incorrect about what our motor fuel tax is based on our code, and so I just want to get some analysis, but the one-cent increase, I think, is still really important.
And this is maybe a little premature, given that we haven't had the vote yet, but I just, I would add my, I would put myself in line with Councilmember Reed. Should this pass in a moment, I would like to see the analysis that were presented for the next vote include information about the distributional question and any input on how that relates to the fines and fees work that our staff has put so much time into. Is there any further discussion on the substitute motion? Seeing now, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Gwen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffolkin?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Nope.
With seven voting in favor and two voting against, the motion passes, and SP2 is duly amended. Is there any further discussion on item?
One last amendment to make that I already sent, which is the $5 increase to the wheel tax. This is something that we have done some research on recently. For this year, there was a $5 increase, and I think next year it makes sense to also make one more $5 increase, bring us in line with Chicago. This moved through committee previously through APW, the prior iteration moved through APW, so we've got a lot of good data on this one. So I move that we increase the wheel tax by $5, and that will guaranteed bring in about $200,000 to $250,000 of revenue.
So Councilmember Reed pursuant to the email that you all received about 10 minutes ago, moves to increase the wheel tax by $5. Is there a second? The motion fails for lack of a second.
Jonathan, let's do this for the environment. Let's make sure that we're holding, folks. I think, I think there's support if you second it.
I'll second it, doing it for the environment.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Reed moves to increase the wheel tax by $5. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Mr. Cummings?
I just had a question, because the way the code is set up, it divides up the wheel tax based on vehicle, and so I just want to find out, is it per?
Five, across the board, yes.
Thank you.
A little, again, sorry, y'all get to hear the internal monologue tonight, because I want to make as few mistakes as possible. Councilmember Kelly had the first light, but I think it might have not been about this item. The rest of the budget. Right, but not about this amendment, SP2, yeah. So we'll hold you, we'll hold off until then. Councilmember Revel, who has four minutes and 15 seconds left.
So we did just do a $5 increase this year. I think that's quite a bit for a lot of our families to absorb, and I, I'm not opposed to another $5 eventually, but I think next year is too soon. And then we got a memo, it seems to me, recently, that talked about our difficulty in collecting our wheel tax because we're not enforcing it, or, I mean, I can't remember where I saw that memo.
I'm happy to respond to that. Or Mike Rivera, or Lucas Tatar, if either...
Councilmember Revel still has the floor.
Well, no, I'd be happy to have some information. But anyway, I am opposed to this amendment.
No one else is seeking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with a minute left.
Yeah, I am, I know, I don't know where Mike Rivera or Lucas Tatar are. They're usually here, our parking managers. In this case, the parking staff made some amendments to the wheel tax code to increase compliance, and those were implemented this year. You know, I think compliance was north of, you know, somewhere between 80% and 90%, so it was pretty high compliance. So I think that will be main, that compliance, we'll see this year with the data, but I think that will be maintained. And this $5 increase, again, puts us in line with Chicago, one of our, you know, big neighbors, and I think we need to, you know, folks, we need to make sacrifices for our climate, and we really need to, it's going to be uncomfortable. I think $5 isn't all that uncomfortable.
Your time's up.
Time is up, but I'll just close here. $5, you know, for, per vehicle is not the biggest sacrifice, and, you know, I think we, Evanstonians can stomach this, and we can, we can do this.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the roll on this amendment? So this is a vote on the amendment to increase the wheel tax by $5.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Gwen?
No.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffolkin?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
No.
With three voting in favor and six voting against, the motion fails. We now return to discussion on SP2, which has been amended once but not twice. The first in line is Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. So I'd like to address fully funding of the pension. I think we've heard loud and clear, there's a tremendous interest and will to turn that pattern around and to begin fully funding this year. So I'd like to have the budget amended. I can talk about how I know we can fund this through surplus, but not just surplus that's been presented, but I'd also like to then make a few more amendments regarding revenue. But can I move just to fully fund first? Can we, and then I can then make some motions on revenue, revenues that I'd like to see just as Councilmember Reed did, but that wouldn't be taxing the residents. So I just want to know, what would be the, can I make the motion to fully fund?
You can do whatever you want.
Okay.
But, you know, you can make a series of separate motions, you know, certainly anything that amends the budget is in order. As you saw from Councilmember Reed's emails, I'm not, you don't need to be loquacious in your, in your putting it in writing, it just needs to be precise, so we don't wind up tomorrow morning arguing about what was done.
Okay, so I'd like to start by making an amendment to fully fund our pensions, which is, and my next motion will be to say to do it from the surplus, that we don't need to raise taxes. So just with that caveat...
I think it should be, I mean, to say that we're going to fully fund the pensions without the funding mechanism.
I can say how much that is, and I can go into detail.
What you should specifically say is what you're adding to the fire and what you're adding to the police pension payment.
So the total, right, so, well, I'm sorry, the total number is 4.5 million. That's, that's what's needed, according to Jason Franken, to put us at an additional 4.5 million on top of the 21...
Exactly, like on the, with a bunch of zeros in it?
Well, there might be a one or a two in there. I can give the exact number, two. But he did, that's what he said, 4.5 million several times now, he stated that that is the amount. So I'd like to, I'd like to increase our funding by 4.5 million and get the exact, if we need, you know, if that makes people feel more comfortable.
I mean, and I'm not trying to be picky. What would actually make me feel most comfortable is two numbers, because there are separate lines in the budget.
Sure, okay. So how about if I just say at this point that we fully fund in accordance with the, with the numbers provided to us by Mr. Franken, but that is in, at roughly 4.5 million. So we don't need the number I'm saying to fully fund, and it is at 4.5 million approximately.
I feel like it looks like I'm trying to be more difficult than I'm trying to be.
It does.
I mean, that's, I mean, we have the budget, and you're trying to amend it, and the budget is like full of numbers in line.
Right, I'm amending it to fully fund, whatever that, I'll just say whatever that is, fully fund, but I'm going to tell everybody right now, it is about 4.5 million more. So I don't think you need to be so difficult. I think we can vote to fully fund. That amount has been stated numerous times now and provided to us, and if it's, you know, if it's...
I mean, look, we don't need to do anything because this is not final action. If you want to take a straw poll of whether nine, five people on council support doing that...
All right, let's do that.
We could, we could do that.
Okay, let's do a straw poll. So I'd like to take a straw poll.
Why are we taking straw polls?
So that staff, to give staff direction.
She doesn't have the numbers to put, to make a literal budget amendment, and I'm just not comfortable amending the budget with, to me, I'm going to accept a budget amendment if it's a thing that we could pass as the budget.
That's fine. So it'd be to give direction. So I'd like to take a straw poll in order to give direction to staff, finance, and budget. In our discussions, we unanimously, at our last meeting, we all agree that we wanted to recommend fully funding of the pension with that number of 4.5, but that's fine. So let's, I'm sorry?
I don't think we can take a roll call.
So I support this. I think many people up here support this. I would like to, at the next meeting, I think, just have numbers and how we're going to pay for it. I think the support is here. We don't have to talk about it anymore.
Okay, well, I think it's worth having it noted, so I would like to just go ahead and do that.
I support it.
Great. I support it.
I support it.
I support it.
I fully support it.
I support it.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
I support it.
All right, Councilmember Kelly?
Okay, so, great. That's great news. That's very exciting. So now I would like to actually make a motion to increase our PPRT revenue for next year. Currently, it's listed at 1.75 million for next year. I do have some issues with what, how we've been funding. For example, this year, the PPRT was at 600,000. The IML gives projections on the PPRT. So the IML, you know, based on, and I think we should start using, you know, their projections. So this year, we... So this year, we budgeted, our finance department budgeted 600,000 for our PPRT. We're already up to about 4 million, and that was projected. We could have seen that through the IML projection charts. So based on what the IML is projecting for next year, there's going to be a slight dip because of the recession. Right now, I'm glad to see that you've increased it to 1.75 million. But we were, we are at this year, right now, close to 4 million with a slight dip. It will probably be closer to, if we follow the guidelines from the IML, closer to 3 million next year. So I'd like to raise it from 1.75 million to 2.75, add a million dollars there in revenue. That can also be money towards, you know, you do the mechanics towards the pension. Okay, that's my amendment, and I'll send it to you.
So while Councilmember Kelly reduces that to writing, is anyone, anyone prepared to second that motion?
I, I am, Hattash, do you want to, so, right, just to, can I, this is a separate motion, which I should have, you know, separate.
So, so are you seconding the motion?
Yes, I'm seconding the motion.
All right, so Councilmember Kelly makes the motion to increase the PPRT projection by a million dollars. Councilmember Reed seconds it while we are awaiting the motion to arrive in writing. Mr. Desai, do you have any commentary on this?
Right, so yesterday's revenues are higher, but obviously the state has notified us that this is for the unique reasons. They change the systems, they get one-time income. And again, I mean, one thing which council should consider in the mind, that this is subject to state's arbitrary decision. In the past, so many times, they have changed the formula, how we get the funding. And when I say how, we means the, all the municipalities. And already IML has come up with their first revision that, okay, we might see a 13% reduction next year from this year. So I would kind of caution it that we don't make these years as a base revenue. This is one time. I don't think we would ever get it. Even I was looking at the last five to seven years' history, we were never close to that number in the past. So, and that's why even still, yeah, considering the IML's revised numbers and considering 13%, and yes, I'm a little bit conservative accounting for the state's potential actions. So that's why even we bumped up our budget by 1.1 million dollars, from 600,000 to 1.7 million. The other thing is sometimes, yes, council members, when we do the budget, which is like in August, September, October, and then by the time we see the numbers, which is in the three months, four months out in the year, in the early spring or the, it's almost like six, eight months gap, and there's continued revisions. IML, others, we look at those estimates, and it goes both ways, upward or downward. In the past, in the recession times, it has gone downwards, our income tax projections on those. So I think, yeah, I mean, 2.7 maybe too high. I mean, I'm comfortable with maybe up to $2 million at best. Again, it's up to the council.
So I think you touched on this briefly, but can you just address the IML projection in more detail that Councilmember Kelly referred to?
So we get these numbers based on Illinois Municipal League. They kind of work with the state government, and they provide these numbers periodically. And then they revise it based on the like input from their state liaison and all that. So, and particularly in this case, they have told us that this is only for this year. It's going to be high. And then they, I just read it like a few months ago, they revised that number and said for the next year, we originally said we could get kind of pretty close to what we have, but there would be a 13% reduction in this PPRT revenue for '23. So we go by those numbers for PPRT and some of the par capita income, like income tax, use tax and all that.
Councilmember Kelly?
So.
And is there an email coming?
There is. I'll send that, and then I'll talk. So I just want to say that the IML has been really almost exact when it look at their projections and what we are receiving, and what we've received. So for '22 to have projected 600,000, when in fact, the year prior to that, we brought in 2.87 million, and the IML was predicting, predicting almost a double in income. So that to me, like, I don't know, Hattash, how, where you got that 600,000 number, but you had that for two years in a row. So, I mean, we are again up to almost 4 million right now. So even at 2.75, we're still going to be considerably under what the projected income would be. I mean, if you want to settle at 2.5, but nevertheless, I feel we can increase that amount from, if that would make you more comfortable, at 2.5. I still think at 1.75 million, we're going to still come in well under what the IML is projecting in terms of.
And one thing which I would just kind of, for clarification, when you see IML estimates or all that, that's the total number. Out of that, we give 325,000 to police pension fund and 280,000 to the fire pension fund. So roughly, a little over 600,000 is taken out of the total PPRT money which we get.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, so I, I would like to keep it at, at the one, what I just sent you, two point, increasing it by 1 million to 2.
Which should be in everyone's inbox by now.
Oh, it's in your, it's in yours. Again, we've been way underestimating, and again, this is money then that we can allocate towards fully funding of our pensions. And I think it should be stated that, you know, the PPRT was designed to provide a revenue source for local governments to meet pension obligations. I mean, this is one of its primary goals. So, so, you know, again, we're almost up to 4 million this year. By more accurately projecting next year, we can therefore, you know, do the mechanics to allocate that money instead towards our, towards, that's one way to be able to more fully fund our pensions without hitting taxpayers. And then I have another proposal also in a moment, so.
So this motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on Councilmember Kelly's proposed amendment to the budget? Council, yeah, Councilmember, was that a phantom light from you?
I just want to say, I mean, it is.
No, I mean, you're not next. I just want to, so Councilwoman Newsma is next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm intrigued by this, but don't you have enough information to feel comfortable with it? Councilmember Kelly, if you could, in reference to the comprehensive budget document, point me to a page and a line, so I know, have a better idea of what we're talking about.
Sure. I mean, I went through each of our budgets and looked at what was projected for each, what the projected was, the estimate and what the actual was, and then I'll send you the link to the IML. I worked also, spent with Brad Cole, and go over these, all these numbers. They have great resources. I'll send you the links to those too, so you can see what projected increases are from year to year. And why it's a good idea to look at that when we project what we expect to receive. And I'm completely comfortable with going under that, to always be on the safe side. We don't, you know, to, not to exceed, but we absolutely can increase it from, from the 1.75 for next year, and should have been higher this year.
Yeah, I guess what I'm not seeing is where the 1.75 comes from. I'm like.
Look, it's in our budget, in our 2023 budget.
Which I'm looking at, and I don't see the numbers. I'm not looking in the right place. So that's what I'm just asking for a little bit of a roadmap here.
Michael, if you go to the revenue page, if you're on the website, that's not just the.
Yeah, my mind, I don't know.
The open guide or whatever.
500 pages here. PPRT appears six times. I'm sure I'm doing math in my head. I'm not seeing a 1.75.
So, Mr. Desai, you can confirm it's 1.75 million, right? Which was a significant increase from last year, right?
So somebody who's, Mr. Desai, just as someone who's not trying to do the Newsma exercise right now, because I would, my head would blow up. Is it, is it correct, you've got to do some arithmetic to get to that number, is it?
No, no, it is there on the page eight of the 500, which is a PDF document on our cityofevanston.org budget website. And you would see some of the top revenues, and towards the bottom, PPRT is, 23 proposed budget is 1.75 million dollars.
And just, Jonathan, also, if you go to that electronic page that you're on, and you go to revenue sources, go to taxes, other taxes, and you'll find it in there.
What page is that?
On the, it's under revenue, other taxes, and.
If you use the budget website rather than the budget document.
The PDF.
All right, I'll take your word for it.
You go to other taxes under revenue sources.
Is there further discussion on the proposed amendment from Councilmember Kelly? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll? And this is again on the PPRT amendment.
I'm sorry, I flipped my lighter. I just want to.
You are out of time, Councilmember.
We're making a bunch of different motions, and for each motion, we should have.
Well, I will, just like last week, if the council's, I will follow the council's wish. If the council wants to suspend the time limit, that's certainly the council's prerogative. Is that, is that what folks want to do?
Silence is consent.
So your time is up. No, I'm serious. Look, it's 10:30 at night. We've got a ton of stuff ahead. I don't want us to make poor decisions because we're here at 2:00 in the morning. If the council tells me, get rid of time limits, they're gone. Until I hear that from council, I'm keeping time limits, because I think that's the responsible way for us to have the best chance of making good decisions throughout this meeting.
To limit our 400 million dollar budget discussion to five minutes per council member is the best way to make decisions?
So I'll just ask again, does council want me to lift the time restrictions?
Or does council not want you to? Again, silence, we can frame it in silence, it's consent, we can let folks be quiet and.
I mean, this is taking more than the comment would have. I really don't mind if we just get to it, you know.
With the, Mr. Cummings?
Just wanted to remind the chair that debate is limited to five minutes, but it's assumed in the absence of objections by the council that the time limit be enforced. So if, I can read it verbatim, "No council member shall speak for longer than five minutes on the same subject except by consent of a majority of the council. Council consent shall be assumed in the absence of objection by any council member or the mayor." The mayor has addressed the objection, so now the council actually has to say whether it's okay or not.
Well, I don't know, are you personally objecting here?
Yeah, no, I want to reiterate, I think that it is wise for us to follow the time limit so that, given how much is ahead of us, which is, I'll remind folks, a lot of stuff, we have the best chance possible of making those decisions with our minds in the best possible position. I don't think that involves unlimited debate. If folks disagree, I will follow the rules and go as a majority.
I can see my time, I can flick on my light and see my time, and he can take it.
All right, so Councilmember Burns is giving his time to Councilmember Reed.
May I?
It's fine, we can.
You know, can I instead move to hold item SP1? I mean, there are a lot of changes.
You can't move to hold it, because it's a special representative, but you can move to table it next week.
Okay, to table it, because there's a lot of other items too, which I was thinking that it would go like that, giving recommendations to staff, and then to hold it and to bring it back with incorporating some of those. So I would like to take off.
Just a one, hold on one second. Your amendment's on the table. So you could withdraw your amendment.
I'll withdraw my amendment.
She can't withdraw her amendment?
She can, but a motion to table would then limit any other action on this tonight, because there's no, a motion to table is not debatable. So then it would just be tabled, and if there were other things that wanted to be discussed by the other people that actually have time, they would have to wait until next week.
So we can't discuss it once it's tabled?
Right, so why don't, why don't we, you can, you've stated your intention. I think that's a good idea. I mean, I'll just say editorially, it worries me, and I remember watching the previous council do this too. It worried me then. The notion of kind of amending the budget on the fly doesn't feel great to me. So I think, I think, you know, to me, it sounds wise to table this, and we can, through, you know, meetings of three of us together, a fewer meetings of individuals, the staff, email correspondence done appropriately, do some of the discussion that ought to happen between now and next Monday. But in the meantime, I think Nick's right. We shouldn't curtail council's ability to use up the time they have giving input tonight, because it's a big deal. So I would say, we'll call on you when other folks have used up their time to make that motion to table, and in the meantime, we'll continue the discussion. So we continue then with Councilmember Harris, who has four minutes left.
No, I appreciate Councilmember Kelly's wanting to have these motions being, I'm going to keep saying this until I'm not new, being new, it does become confusing on not having that in front of us and making decisions for our constituents on the fly. So I appreciate her understanding that and pulling back to give us opportunity to really look at it, critique it, and make some wise decisions.
Further discussion, Councilmember Kelly, with about a minute left.
My intention was originally to hold it, but then when we voted on the tax, the gas tax, then I thought, oh, we have to, I had to do this this evening. So I'm much more comfortable sending this out to everybody. The PPRT is incredibly complicated. And I, and I think it would, I think it actually behooves us all to understand, because it is, it's also a significant revenue source. So I am going to remove my motion. Do I, do I need a second?
So Councilmember Kelly withdraws her motion, so we're back at SP2, which again, Councilmember Kelly intends to move to table, which I think is a, I would personally hope folks support that motion. But there's still time to discuss it, so if anyone has any further questions or input on SP2, now is your moment. Councilmember Burns?
I think this applies, but I just wanted to say that Councilmember Reed's, his amendment regarding the wheel tax, that I supported it mainly because I think this, I would love this council to get serious about revenue generation. We're gonna, there's a lot of requests for funds, even requests for funds in this meeting, large numbers, big numbers, that are going to impact our budget, and we don't talk enough about revenue, you know. And it's always a difficult conversation, but it's one I think worth having, that we need to have. And I feel way more comfortable doing it around things that involve vehicles, because I don't think we come near what we need, getting what we need to from people who drive vehicles, including myself, to take care of our roads, to, to get anywhere near meeting our climate action resiliency goals. And we need to get serious from it. Again, it's a tough pill to swallow sometimes, doesn't feel good politically. And I don't mean that in a, in a, in a bad sense. I mean, we all represent constituents, and, you know, when they push back, we should, we should hear that. That should impact the way we vote up here. So I'm not saying that in a, in a bad way, but we do, we do need to get serious about revenue. And so I would ask staff, if we could do a forward look, and this shouldn't just be coming from Councilmember Reed. I think as a full staff, as a community, I'd love to see, you know, looking ahead, what type of schedule we can be in, be on to increase, you know, whether it's taxes, fines, whatever it is, but what type of schedule do we need to get on to realistically meet some of the demands that we always talk about, including carbon and others? So that's why I supported it. Again, it's, it's difficult to have these discussions, but we need to get serious about revenue.
Councilmember Hadda Gares with four minutes and 20 seconds left.
So I know last meeting, we had an idea, a revenue generation idea I liked, with the non-resident parking at facilities. Could that be something that staff could look into and get some projection as to what possible revenues that would generate at Crown and maybe James Park?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of City Council, Clerk Mendoza, Lukshto, City Manager. We do believe that there may be support on the council, but there's just a lot of considerations that would go into that, identifying which locations. If it's a family from out of town that's there for several hours all day at Robert Crown, for example, for a tournament, what's the hourly rate? Is there a max cap? If they go to lunch, come back? So there's just a lot of moving pieces to that, that we want staff to have some time to analyze that further, especially parks and rec.
With half a minute left, Councilmember Kelly.
And again, I'll write this all up, but I'd also recommend that we increase by 500,000 our real estate transfer tax. We are routinely way under, budgeted way under last year. We budgeted 3.1, 3 million, and we ended up with 6.1 that we didn't know about until, you know, after we passed the budget. So I'm going to also recommend that, but I'll write that up. I'm not just. I'm not, just, that's all.
Is there further discussion about item SP2? So we, if, 30 seconds?
30 seconds.
30 seconds.
Yeah.
Councilmember Reed.
I, I, you know, would like us to, you know, maybe have staff come back with wheel tax information. Maybe we can get to 250 or something. But again, if we care about carp, if we care about our climate, if we're going to be leaders and actually educate our residents about our $100 million unfunded infrastructure liability, if we're going to make sure that we're meeting our carp goals, we need to make investments. $2.50, $5 is a minimum, and is, I can't see how folks can really see that as aggressive. We need to get serious. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Councilmember Kelly, you're suggesting we increase our projection for the real estate transfer tax. I'm concerned that we don't expect too much from that revenue source, especially in 2023 with the high interest rate environment. I think the last few years of history is not something that we can expect to carry forward to 2023. So I would be reluctant to increase that projection without some significant, you know, research that, that would help us justify that number. In the end, it's just a prediction, and I think to be financially prudent, I would rather err on the side of caution and under-project and find ourselves with a bit of a surplus at the end of the year than have the other thing happen. So I'd be reluctant to support that one.
I was being very restrained in the amount because we always way under, so what I was advocating for was a $500,000 increase, which I know we're also going to come out considerably under with that. So again, I wasn't, like I said, we've always been way under, way, way under. And so this isn't much of an increase to at least come closer and to not then, you know, have our taxpayers pay that difference that's going to come back as surplus.
Is there any further discussion on SP2? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Nusma, I apologize, I didn't see you walking up.
Just to kind of clarify on the real estate transfer tax, two things, as Councilmember Nusma said. One thing is the high interest rate that might affect particularly if that affects us on the commercial side because that was the main driving force for the last two. And the other thing is, I heard initially, right now it says the assessment is going to go up by 30%, and that might impact us too because I see that in 2020, because of the uncertainty, we only generated $3 million in the overall tax revenue. And obviously, we have, after they've settled all the appeals and all that, and with the low interest rate environment, which helped us in the last two years, in '21 and '22. And again, this is, yeah, kind of be affected by two factors, the high interest rate as well as the higher taxes.
Seeing none for the discussion on SP2, would you care to make a motion, Councilmember Kelly?
I'd like to move to table SP2.
To?
To our next council meeting. To-
To the special meeting on the 21st of November, by any chance?
The special meeting on November 21st.
How do I know? Councilmember Kelly moves to table item SP2, ordinance 99-0-22, to our November 21st special meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Reed, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly? Aye. Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadakatis?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor, none voting against, the motion carries, and the item will be on our agenda next week.
I'll move items SP3 through SP9. I'm sorry, through SP-
Nine.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of items SP3 through SP9, which is to say ordinances 101, 102, 103, 104, 105, 106, all-0-22, of course.
Actually, I think at this point, maybe it just makes sense to table them and move them with the rest of the budget.
Councilmember Reed moves to table items SP3 through SP9, or also SP10?
I mean, yeah.
SP10 is pretty mechanical, but-
I'll say SP10 as well, table them all to-
Councilmember Reed moves to table items SP3 through SP10. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly? Aye. Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadakatis?
Aye.
Nine voting in favor and none voting against. The motion to table items SP3 through SP10 to the November 21st special city council meeting passes, and so all these items will be back a week from today, same place, maybe even same time, who knows? This brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any items that folks want removed from the consent agenda?
Item A11 and P2, please.
So we have, so I was, I got a text about item A2, so we have A2, A11, and P2 so far.
R1 and R2, please.
R1 and R2? So so far, all we have is A2, A11, P2, R1, and R2. Mr. Cummings?
A16.
Sorry, what's that?
A16.
A16, Mr. Cummings?
Just wanted to point out to the council that there are a couple of items that are on for introduction and action. Requested.
Oh, I'll move sis-
Right, so those are A16 and P2, correct?
And H4.
Oh, sorry, H4.
Food, service, and retail store sanitation.
So would someone like that pulled as well?
I'll pull off H4.
Okay. So at this time, we have A2, A11, A16, P2, H4, R1, and R2?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Oh, that's, that's, there's a lot of stuff here. And I've never heard that sort of outcry when someone was on the consent agenda before. H2? So at this time, we have A2, A11, A16, P2, H2, H4, and R1, R2.
Then with that-
Is there any, are folks ready?
With that, I'll move the consent agenda minus that manajery of the items that was removed.
Is there a second? Councilmember Reed moves passage of the consent agenda with the exception of A2, A11, A16, P2, H2, H4, R1, and R2. Councilmember Nusma, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
No.
This is the consent agenda.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadakatis?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries, and all of those items are declared passed. Everything good? This brings us now to item A2. Councilmember Kelly, would you like to make a motion on item A2?
I'd like to move item A2, approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves passage of item A2, approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity. Councilmember Nusma, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Sorry, Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Council, Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye, abstained.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadakatis?
Aye.
With A voting in favor, none voting against, and one abstention, the motion passes, and the activity is approved. This brings us to item A11. Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion on item A11?
Sure, I'd like to move item A11, Resolution 63R-22, recognizing the public benefit of the city paying private sewer repair line costs in excess of $15,000 per repair for residential property.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves passage of Resolution 63-R-22. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? We begin with Councilmember Kelly, followed by Nusma.
So there's an amendment on here by Councilmember Harris to, in addition, adding that residents with income levels of $100,000 or less, they would pay $5,000, and $15,000 is for 200. So it's, I don't, did that get sent, that amendment from Mr. Stoneback? So it was approved for-
Was it amended in committee?
It was amended at APW, 4-1.
So what's before the council has already been amended? It's just that we don't have it.
But it's not, it doesn't match, this is really helpful, thank you. So it does not match what's in the packet. So can you just describe again how it varies from the packet?
Here it says, so it's the same as everything here, but we're adding in addition, if the income level is $100,000 or less, then it's $5,000 rather than $15,000. Looking at it through a lens of equity so as not to unduly harm our lower-income residents.
Thank you. Councilmember Nusma.
Sorry, wrong about it. I'm going to oppose this, but just a point of information, what we amended in committee was not merely crossing out $100,000 and, or not crossing out $200,000, but writing $100 in.
Correct. Adding in $100.
And in two tiers.
Exactly.
I am going to oppose this. As sympathetic as I am to any homeowner who has a huge unforeseen property maintenance expense, I'm reluctant to put the city on the hook for an unknown number of potentially millions of dollars, you know, into the future. So I will be opposing this, I'll keep my comments short.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Burns.
Yeah, I appreciate Councilmember Nusma's concern as staff's documents have shown us, the estimated liability is likely $50,000 a year. So, you know, it could be millions over the next, you know, century. But seemingly, unless staff has something that shows that they expect a mass failure in our sewer system, I think that, that estimate of, you know, $50,000, maybe in a bad year, $100,000, $150,000 if we have three sewers fail. We're also not covering the full cost. I don't expect this to be a huge expense according to the information that was provided by staff, and so I am in support of this. And I think this really ensures that we're looking out, that we're looking out for our neighbors and ensuring that everyone has access to a sewer. It's a public health concern, and that is exactly why we are here, recognizing the public benefit of ensuring that everyone has access to a working sewer line regardless of their income, and that having a working sewer doesn't, you know, nearly, you know, either bankrupt, bankrupt someone or cause them to severely draw down on their savings. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
As I said in APW, I think that was, I think initially, I was thinking about this different. I thought this was a proposal to address, in waterline terms, kind of the private side of the sewer line, which it is not. It only aims to address what, if it were a waterline, the city is already responsible for. So for me, that changed things tremendously because I don't think we can, we should look at it as some unknown amount that we would, the city would be tabbed with in the same way we don't think about that with our water service lines. I think really the question is, is just, is the city, which is this council, willing to add on to the service lines, on the, on the private side or the public side that we're willing to take on? And I would say yes, as long as we're willing to make that commitment. We have, I think, $2.5 million that we want to keep in our sewer reserve funds, which I do want to stay at that amount. And so I just want everybody here to also commit to raising our sewer rates if need be. I don't think we'll have to. Certainly not in any time soon because we do have a reserve fund that's performed pretty, that we've been able to increase over time. But again, if we're willing to do the, the public side of the water service line, why not extend that to the sewer line? So I'm totally in support of this.
No one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with four minutes and 15 seconds left.
So I'd like to call the question. We don't need to do that. We don't need to do that.
Yeah, we were out of-
It's just that it's been like 18 months of this sewer line.
Yeah, no one else wanted to speak, so, seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sefredin?
No.
Councilmember Ravel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Caris?
Aye.
With five voting in favor and four voting against, the motion passes. This brings us to item A16, where I believe Councilmember Hadda-Caris has a motion to make.
I would move to suspend the rules for ordinance 122O22, amending Section 10115C, Schedule VC of the Evanston City Code, three-way stops, three-way stops at Florence Avenue and Washington Street. I'd like to have this for introduction and action tonight.
Second.
Councilmember Hadda-Caris moves to suspend the rules to allow for both introduction and action to occur simultaneously tonight on ordinance 122-O-22. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Is there any discussion? The clerk, please take the roll on the motion to suspend the rules.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sefredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Caris?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. The rules are suspended, and we now have the opportunity to carry out introduction and action in a single vote this evening. Councilmember Hadda-Caris, would you like to make that motion?
Sure. I would make the motion to, what's the procedure again?
Move the ordinance.
Pass. Move to pass the ordinance this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Hadda-Caris moves to pass ordinance 122-O-22. This would be final action. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sefredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Caris?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion passes, and ordinance 122-O-22 is passed. This brings us now to item P2. Councilmember Nusma, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to suspend the rules to allow introduction and immediate action this evening on ordinance 119-O-22, approving zoning relief for Underwriters Labs, signage at 1603 Orienton.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves suspension of the rules to allow for final passage tonight of ordinance 119-O-22. Councilmember Burns seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none, would the clerk please, oh, Councilmember Reed?
Do, what is the threshold for this, for suspending the rules for introduction and action?
I believe it's unanimous. I think abstentions don't count against.
Correct.
But, but I think any no vote would cause this motion to fail.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure of that.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on our discussion at A&amp;PW, this does, or at Planning and Development, rather, this does have the votes to pass, and I would love to see us pass this immediately and welcome a new employer to town as soon as possible.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll again on the motion to suspend the rules?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
I'm so excited.
Yes.
I jumped the gun, aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sefredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Caris?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion to suspend the rules carries. Councilmember Nusma, would you care to make another motion now?
So, I will move immediate action on item P2, which is ordinance 119-O-22.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves passage, which would say final action on ordinance 119-O-22. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sefredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Caris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion passes and the zoning relief is granted, and we are pleased to welcome a new business, a new employer, and a new producer of downtown office workers to our town. This brings us now to item H2. Would, Councilmember Burns, would you care to make a motion on item H2?
Some moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Burns moves passage of Resolution 68-R-22. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Ravel?
Well, I noticed in the memo in the packet that it talked about how LEAP has a grant for a good portion of the original budget. I just was interested in a little more information.
And I don't know if LEAP is here today, but I don't have specific details on it, but I think the, you know, in response to some of the concerns expressed through, you know, at the committee and at council, you know, they went out to see what they could do to get matching funding to work here in Evanston. And the grant, as far as I understand it, is to advance this work, not only in Evanston, but some of the other jurisdictions that they're currently working in. And, you know, I think they feel like the, our ability to not only work on something but pass it here in Evanston is a good one, and they're willing to make the investment. So, we've been able to bring this down from 40,000 to now 15,000. Technically, it does not require council action at this point, but because it was held here, you know, it was only appropriate to bring it back for a vote.
I guess I just would say that there's been a lot of work already done in the community around the whole idea of, the work that LEAP's going to be doing, and getting, it's getting late. And so, I'm hopeful that they can, you know, bring us a work product relatively quickly.
For sure.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Harris.
Yeah, and I'm happy to speak to some of the concerns that were expressed in public comment. You know, I think there were, and I don't want to get too deep into this, because I really think that if some of the public commenters were to read this, if they were to read the scope, they would see that this is not some, LEAP does not plan to come in, nor in their scope would they be authorized to come in and dictate to the city or to any of the working group, committee members, or the committee itself, or anyone really, what is going to work here in Evanston. I think if you were to read the scope, it speaks about collaboration. The role of LEAP really is to facilitate, in the same way that Trilogy, because I reached out to them, had to put together a 50-page document, I think it was, and spent countless of hours preparing to respond to the RFP, the state RFP, that was eventually approved and that now at least partially supports the work that they're doing. I can't remember what they want us to call it. They don't want us to call it outreach, but the mobile crisis response is the same effort we're going to need in order to not only think through all the different potential alternatives to 911, some of which we've already, you know, started to work on, but others that we still need to look into, from CSO programs, which some of our neighboring communities have, to community responder programs, to problem-solving team programs. Somebody's going to need to review all the different options, to do the, to analyze the data, which it was suggested on public comment that the data that they're going to look at has already been analyzed. That is not true. The data that they're now authorized to look at, because we have a, they have, they've signed an agreement with our police department, is data that, in the volume in which they're going to be requesting, will be completely redacted because of the sensitive information that is provided in it. And so, again, I can respond to any concerns, but, you know, this is simply a group that's going to come in and help facilitate these discussions with our police department, with our committee members, that includes the two public commenters that you heard from today, and that are going to help drive this work forward. I'm appreciative of this council for also approving in the consent agenda, the hourly position to support the reimagining public safety committee as a whole. And again, this is just another step in the right direction to try to advance this work so that we can have some, you know, budget recommendations or considerations next year.
Councilmember Harris?
It goes without saying that I heard the residents had their concerns, that they had not heard about this, a committee that was formed to work on this, or work on this type of business. So, I will be remiss to say that it didn't hear that loud and clear, and that I want to make sure the committee that was put together to work on this understands the direction that we're moving in.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say that in response to that, if I can, sure. You know, that, and I want to be sensitive here, because I truly want to partner with what we, you know, everyone that has been a part of the working group that they mentioned. But everyone has not, I'll just say this, everyone has not participated at 100% in the working groups. We have, I don't want to go too far, but we have, this issue was discussed at the working group. LEAP has been a regular, LEAP, as well as ACLU and other partner and organizations have been a staple in our meetings, and for those who attended the meetings, they would know that. And some people, for frustrations that I shared, decided not to continue to participate in those meetings. One of them, I think we've addressed the major main concern, is that, again, it really didn't have any, enough staff support to follow up on some of the things that the committee members would like to see. We've now addressed that through hiring this hourly employee, and, but I just want to say that we have, this absolutely was brought up in the working group that I chair. They've been a staple in the discussions. We were, I think one of the suggestions was that they, someone, one of the public commenters reached out to several of the organizations that I've mentioned in past discussions, to ask about LEAP, and they didn't know them. That's not true. ACLU, who has been a part of the discussions in the working group, actually recommended that we work with LEAP, work with Fuse, work with everybody else that I've, you know, talked about the last several weeks. So, again, there was a lot that was shared. I hear them. We're going to involve their input 100%, but a lot of what was stated today is just not true.
Councilmember Kelly?
So, I hear you loud and clear, Councilmember Burns, and I want to support you. I just, I did hear from the community also, and I would just ask, I mean, I guess I would need, it would be great to reconvene, you know, the larger re-managing public safety and have it come back as a recommendation from the whole group. Also, I mean, I guess I have wonder, and I'm not saying it wouldn't be supported, but I think it would be helpful to the community in terms of trust and everything else, to meet with the whole large group of people who were committed, and we heard from some of those members today. And then also compare, I know there are groups like Everytown Community Initiatives that do this. I'd like to understand, like, see a flow chart of why we're going with LEAP, which, you know, from what I understand, are former police officers, and from my experience talking to people staffing these, like in Denver, that I've worked with a lot, like, even for their Chief of Staff, they've gravitated towards people experienced and trained in social service, not in policing so much. So, I would like to table this, and then just, I'd like to see, like, why, you know, versus like Everytown or community initiatives, you know, why this group instead, and it might work perfectly, but I just would like to see that. And then I guess I'd also like to, you know, do that, so that one, if you could do that one piece of outreach with the reimagining public safety piece, I think I would feel better than moving forward with that, acknowledging some of the expression that we heard this evening. So, I'd like to table it until-
I want to say, this was not, this is not a committee of police officers.
You'll have a chance, I promise, I just, so what's the motion?
Motion's to ta, I'd like to table this.
Until when?
Let me go again. Actually, how about if, so that there's time until, since, all this is going to come up for intro anyway, till maybe the, not the 21st, but the 20th?
No, this is a resolution, so this takes one vote.
Okay. So, you mean?
This is not an intro and action situation.
Okay. So, then I'd like to table it till the 28th.
So, Councilmember Kelly moves to table item H-
Point of information, or point of something.
Point of something?
Point of something. Just to, you know-
Can I state the motion?
Sure.
Councilmember Kelly moves to table item H2 to the November 28th regular city council meeting. Is there a second? The motion fails for lack of a second. So, Councilmember Kelly still has the floor, if you want to, and then Councilmember Reed will be next.
Well, I guess, and then I'd just ask you, Councilmember Burns, if you would consider offering to do that. I just think it's important, I'd like to see comparisons with Everytown Community Initiatives, and some of the ones that are more oriented, that I censor, why this one over those, for example, and I can send you some others, but I just have no sense, and I'd also like, I think would be better for the community moving forward, since this is so important. What we're, also, anyway, I think we should at least do that with the larger groups, so that the community can come back and feel that they've been consulted and took part in this. But I just want to say, I had moved to table it, but I didn't get a sec, okay. It's okay.
And I'm just saying that the, I'm just-
So, let's just go to, let's go to, let's go to Councilmember Reed, and then you'll be after. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, maybe I can do a decent enough job. So, you know, one, why this one? Why this group? Why LEAP? I think that's a really good question, and at least in my mind, I'm on the subcommittee that Councilmember Burns chairs, I'm on the reimagining police. I think LEAP is important for this, because we are, you know, we, let's be frank, you know, we've had very frank conversations with our police department, and they've expressed some concerns with this council and with the direction that the nation is going in policing, and I think it's critically important to have a group that has been in the trenches of law enforcement recommending these changes, so it comes from a place of credibility. And so, that's why I really think LEAP is important, an important partner, better than, you know, it's great to have, you know, folks who are just advocates and maybe haven't been police officers, but I think with something as critical as this, having former law enforcement who are progressively minded and who really understand what the day-to-day job is, is really important for getting buy-in from our department. So, that's one. And then also note that, you know, I know some folks in public comment were a bit, and even I, have been somewhat dismayed with the seemingly glacial pace of the reimagining work, and part of that is because we didn't have a permanent police chief until just two or three weeks ago, for most of the period that the reimagining police, or Public Safety Committee was in existence. And so, I think with those two points, and also, I just want to highlight, we're talking about $15,000 here. We're not talking about $150,000, we're not talking about, you know, $300,000, we're talking about $15,000 here. It's a minute amount of money, and this will, again, allow us to have law enforcement professionals, folks who've been in the trenches, helping us dive through this data and make recommendations, and I think that's critically important, particularly in these times.
So, no one else is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Burns with 40 seconds left.
Yeah, and I just wanted to refer people back to the previous meetings when we heard from LEAP directly, and asked them how they were comprised, and they talked about not only being comprised of people with law enforcement, both current and past law enforcement connection, but also what you mentioned, Councilmember Kelly, people who are advocates in this space that are, that work in social service. And so, they approached this from a holistic standpoint. So, I would ask that we refer back to what they said about their organization, and not simply the comments that we heard during, maybe five or 10 minutes during public comment. They have addressed this body on several occasions now at committee. You had opportunities to ask those questions, they could, they would have happily let, you know, let you know exactly who they are, who's going to be doing this work. We're not going to have, you know, so this is a holistic approach. People from a lot of different backgrounds are part of LEAP. They like to partner with law enforcement, because we need the support from law enforcement in order to effectively execute our reimagining work. And I've said that time and time again, we need buy-in from them, and so I think they see it as an asset, having law enforcement across the country that are willing to advocate for these progressive reforms that we're trying to get passed here in Evanston, but they are not completely comprised of law enforcement.
Councilmember Harris with four and a half minutes left.
Okay, I won't take all that time. Bobby, I have some questions, and I want concise answers, just one-word answer. Yep, yes.
Can the words have multiple syllables?
Yes. So, there are three Cs. What was the cost prior? Wasn't it 40,000?
It was 40.
40? Okay, see, you got it. You talked to the chief, and she's on board?
I can't put that on her. What the chief said is that she met with LEAP, I can't do it in one word, I'm sorry. So, yes, I've talked to the chief, but I had to bring a little bit of information on this. The chief said that she felt comfortable saying that for the work that LEAP is going to do, and she's met with him now, that they do not currently have the staff capacity to do that work.
Okay. I just want to make, remember, that was my conversation before, that she was new, and I didn't want to put something in her lap.
Might have met with her, I think, within a week of you making that request.
Okay. And then my last C, again, I just want to be respectful of the committee, whether they attended or not, they didn't have, they don't feel like they had the information. I'm not going to say they didn't have it at their fingertips, but they felt like that. So, we have to, as a council, we cannot ignore what we heard, but I'm going to have faith in you as my council member, and working with you in what you tell me.
That's why I said I wanted to be careful, because I don't want to alienate them, that each, you know, everybody that we heard during public comment is a valuable part of doing this work, but again, it was, there were some pretty clear claims that were made that I think could have influenced the body, and so I had to just be honest and say, look, you know, I don't, I don't think everybody was there at all the meetings.
Yeah, you should just readdress. Right, readdress with them, please.
While, just, I want to, you guys, you know, probably aren't aware of this, Chief Stewart is in the Zoom at this time. Chief, do you want to respond to Councilmember Harris's question?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm, I did have that conversation, was able to be on a webinar with LEAP.
Thank you very much. Next, we go back to Councilmember Kelly, who I think it says two minutes and 14 seconds left, very precise.
So, I just want to say, it's not about the money. It's not because they went from 40 to 15. It's about what we need and want in the community. And so, and again, I'm not saying no to this, I'm just asking that we do the due diligence. And, you know, when I just was researching the board of directors, it looks like none of them have social work or mental health background, and if they do, if you could tell me which one, because it looks to me like none of them do, and that's a concern for me. So, again, I would, I just want to see a comparison, why we should go with this group group rather than another group or any group at all, and, and have that meeting with the community, and then bring it back, so that it's not, um, so that, so that due diligence is done. Um, I think we should have a social work, mental health, um, leadership in, in the program that we're going forward with, not predominantly, um, former law enforcement, if we're going to do a, a, the kind of program I think that Evanston is looking to implement. So I would just ask you, um, Councilmember Burns, to consider showing us why this went over the other ones, and to meet with the community so that, and then bring it back again.
And, and I'm going to be brief, but we, we have done our due diligence, we've met, we've talked about this now for several meetings and several emails and several meetings with staff. Um, it's, you're, you're, you're trying to find things on the fly to pick out when you had ample opportunity over the last several months now to ask these questions, especially when LEAP was here on, on two separate occasions, to ask these questions, and you did it.
No, I've been, we've talked-
The people who are leading this work, Amos, uh, uh, Amos and Lionel are not former law enforcement, they approached this from both an academic and a social service background.
So who has the social service background?
The people who would be leading this work.
And who is that? Who has the social service background?
I'm not going back and forth.
I'm sorry, but just who has the social-
You had that opportunity.
I'm just asking you, who has the social work or mental health background? Lionel has a background in-
Lionel King, who, who presented to us the last thing. You had opportunities to ask the questions, and you did it.
Bobby, that's not, this is a meeting, I'm not going to, like, I work nine in day on council, and I, and we've talked at length, and I talked at length on Friday with you in our meeting, and you heard from me, you heard my concerns then, so this is not the first time you've heard these.
You're new, because you're just, you're trying to-
All right, let's, uh, is there any further discussion on item H2? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, uh, Resolution 68 dash R dash 22 is passed. This brings us now to item H4, where it looks like someone would like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Yeah, I'll move item H4, ordinance, uh, first, I'll move, yeah, first I'll move ordinance H4, H4 ordinance, uh, sorry, I'm confused, it's getting late.
This is a rule suspension.
Yeah, so I'll move the ordinance first, then suspend the rules. So ordinance 115-022 amending portions of Title VIII, Chapter 6, food service and retail, food store sanitation of the city code.
And this is a motion for introduction and action?
Uh, um, yes.
All right, so Councilmember Reed moves, um, to pass final, to pass ordinance 115-dash O-dash 22 with final action, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris, seconds.
And then-
So then, Mr. Mayor-
Was there a motion to suspend the rules?
Yeah, I'm going to move that now.
Yeah, so the, the proposal is to do it in the opposite order, can, with the first motion on the table, can there now be a rule suspension motion on top of that?
Okay, so, yes, yes, sorry.
All right, Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, uh, I move suspension of the rules to, yeah.
Councilmember Reed moves suspension of the rules to allow for the previous motion to be in order, uh, to allow for both introduction and action on ordinance 115-dash O-dash 22 to occur tonight, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Councilmember Nusma, seconds. Is there, is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
The motion carries and the rules are suspended, uh, so that now the next vote could be a vote for final action on ordinance 115-dash O-dash 22, is there any discussion on this? Councilmember Reed?
There's just, uh, one procedural thing, uh, and then, uh, something more substantive. So procedurally, I just want to note, because this is important, it did, this particular ordinance did not go through referrals committee. The Human Services Committee realized that, and were willing to, given what Director Ogbo shared with us about the urgency here to move forward, but I want to note for both City Manager Stowe, and for staff, and for the mayor, and for all of us, this didn't go through referrals, and we need to make sure that we're implementing that across the board.
Can I just cut in?
Sure.
Just want to, I want to thank you for that. Um, there's been, um, noted improvements, uh, there's been a couple instances recently where staff kind of realized that something was in the hopper inappropriately, and staff has pulled back. I want to publicly thank, um, thank our team for that, and just thank Councilmember Reed for flagging this. I think getting this issue right is going to continue to be a collaborative project for all of us. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Okay, and then, uh, substantively, uh, there, there's just one thing I want to note here, because this was, uh, implemented maybe a little incorrectly previously, so this very clearly, uh, there, there are a whole bunch of great changes here that, that the Health Directors Team brought forward, that bring this in alignment with, uh, new standards with, uh, is it the F, yeah, exactly, with new FDA standards, and so this meets that. Uh, one thing that we, uh, wanted to make sure was clear and, and made it into this, uh, what's before us, uh, or one thing that I was really passionate about, was making sure that the peddler's license was clear, that it's $50, um, and previously there'd been, uh, some confusion, and folks were charged above $50 for the peddler's license. Uh, I, I want to see the, uh, eloteros, and, uh, I'm saying that incorrectly, and I'm sorry, and I want to see, you know, the, you know, vendors down at the lakefront and at our parks next summer, when it's nice out and when folks are down there, and so, uh, I want to make sure that we're continuing to get the word out about this, uh, license, and that we are, uh, um, making the lakefront experience better for, for Evanston residents and more welcoming.
Is there any further discussion on, uh, item H4? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion, uh, carries and, uh, ordinance 115-dash O-dash 22 is passed for both introduction and action. This brings us now to item R1, would someone care to make a motion on item R1?
I'll move item, well, Councilmember Burns, move that.
Yeah.
Second.
Councilmember Burns moves, uh, passage of item R1, approval of $5 million of ARPA funding to support reparations economic development initiatives. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I didn't, I'm in full support of making sure we're funding up reparations, but I do have, well, first we have council, former councilmember Alderman, as you recalled in the day, uh, Ruth Simmons here, I don't know if you want to give any comment on this, or if you want to wait and if there are any questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so one thing I want to get clear is, um, what would our ARPA, uh, funding be, what would, what would be left in ARPA if we were to make this transfer? Thank you, Sarah.
It's a little complicated, because we have a bunch of numbers that are not being approved tonight, that, um, are being moved forward. So far, what has been approved tonight, I think I got all this correct, is the, um, $1,200,000 for the rebuilding warehouse, um, and then the, uh, $30,000 for the RPS analyst, and the $15,000 for LEAP. So that's $1,245,000. We started off with a balance of $9,096,423.
So we'd have about $8 million?
We would.
Or, I'm sorry, a little less than that.
But I do want to point out that, um, some of the things that are pending is, um, $2,100,000, which is in, um, the budget balancing, in the, in the budget itself, um, $1,005 was, is in the budget for the equipment fund, and $600,000 is in that budget for the parking fund. Um, so if everything that I had put on the list of things that are pending or moving through, um, which included rebuilding warehouse, um, the ARPA request, um, the small landlord program, which is coming back to the Housing and Community Development Committee, um, and the, there is a Mather workforce development, um, proposal that's coming to the Economic Development Committee, um, those plus the equipment fund and the parking fund, if all of those things were to move forward, um, we would have remaining $193,423.
And so that, I'm sorry, does that include the $5 million for reparations?
Yes, if the $5 million is included.
So without the $5, okay, so then we have $5,100,000?
$5 million, exactly.
Okay. Um, so I, you know, I'm, I'm okay to move this forward, I, 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 and then, next question is, would, and maybe this is a corporation council question, or someone, but I know Providence, or I believe Providence, Rhode Island, is that correct, implemented reparations using $10 million in ARPA funds?
Yes.
And so do they use race-based reparations, or do they use qualified census tracts?
Um-
Do we know that?
They, their eligibility, um, included, um, people who had been harmed by the city, that included, um, indigenous people, um, African heritage people, um, of course, this had to be tied to being done in qualified census tracts, um, and they also included, because you can't, you can't keep it limited only to any racial group, um, in, they included residents facing poverty in those which are their, um, people living in those census tracts, which they further defined as, um, households with incomes under 50% of the area median, and under 30%, which is extremely low and very low income. Um, so it's, they have a lot of different, they have an 11-point plan, um, which goes well beyond economic development, it has lots of different components to it, at least in their write-up. Um, I don't, I haven't studied it in great detail, so I don't really know how it's being implemented, um, but, um, they have, um, Providence is about, um, 190,000 people, um, their demographics are somewhat different from Evanston's, um, in that they have, um, about 29% of their residents actually, uh, live below the poverty line, um, which means they have, and they have a lot more QCTs than we do, they have a lot more census tracts altogether, but they have a lot more qualified census tracts. That's, um, I don't know how much that helps, but-
Yeah, no, no, that, that's helpful, uh, and I, I, I raised that, uh, because here in Evanston, we have, uh, a, an exclusive reparations program, it's a race-based reparations program for African-Americans, and I have a, I, I think we need to move forward on making this kind of investment in reparations. I wonder if to allow more, for us to be targeted in the way that we are with reparations, to allow more flexibility and to not tie this up with ARPA requirements, if making a, you know, $3 to $5 million, uh, investment from our reserves or from some other funding source would, uh, make sense to give us more flexibility, rather than, you know, having to limit in a seemingly constrictive way, given how our current program is formulated, um, you know, using ARPA funds. So I wonder if, you know, folks are amenable to, to, to doing this with general fund, uh, money rather than ARPA. And then that would leave us, you know, this $5 million to continue with, uh, our, our
So a lot of people are in line, Councilmember Saffredin, followed by Nusma, followed by Herakakis, followed by Ravel.
Uh, thank you, Ravel. How did, was the $5 million number arrived at? Uh, that's not addressed in the memo.
I'm happy to take that, if stat-
Is there someone from staff, or is there some, or a member of the committee?
It was the reparations committee.
Yeah, the, the, there's three members of the committee here, and the chair is here, but I can, uh, answer, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, and, and also Tashika's here. Um, the debate at the reparations committee meeting, I believe it was either in September or October, uh, went over, went over an overview of two different funding sources in ARPA that totaled, in those two funding sources, 18 million. And so the committee, uh, determined that between those two funds, having 18 million, um, that a, a reasonable request would be for five.
Okay, so at the time of the discussion, there was $18 million remaining?
I, I, sorry to interrupt.
Five was chosen as a percentage of, of 18, is that, is that out?
Well, there were two funds, one for 10 and one for eight. It was negative impacts, and I can't remember what the other one was called, uh, but the two funds together totaled 18.
My understanding, uh, is, I certainly recall, uh, referencing to the committee at the time, that I believe that there was only about $9 million left, I think that was part of the discussion, I think the committee was aware of what was left in ARPA, roughly, and it's panning out, um, so I think the committee was aware that, you know, we're asking for a substantial portion of what was remaining in ARPA.
Okay, and as you sit here today, the $5 million represents basically everything that is remaining outside of the $194,000 or whatever Sarah just said would be left if this were to pass as proposed.
It didn't seem like it.
Yeah, if you're asking me correct.
Yes, the other major-
Sarah question, or, or, but I mean, this $5 million would be the, the remaining ARPA money with a little, like, around $200,000 after that?
Yeah, that is the largest kind of remaining, or individual, um, amount of ARPA that is, of course, the council just approved $1,200,000. The, um, portion that's in the 2023 budget of, um, $2,100,000 is also the other significant, just the things that are all on the agenda are close to it today, so just keep track of that.
Okay, and this is in addition to the $10 million that the program was originally funded with, or is this to get to the $10 million to make up for the pace at which cannabis tax revenue is coming in?
My understanding is this is in addition to that, it does not, um, it does not affect the cannabis.
It's, it's two separate, um, items altogether, so the ARPA funding would be to go to economic development projects, uh, and the graduated real estate transfer tax, which is R2, would go to supplement the cannabis tax.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, now we really have a lot of people, um, and I actually want to exert my privileges chair to ask a follow-up to the next point. The, so the real estate, but the real estate transfer tax that we will talk about later is not in lieu of the $10 million cannabis revenue, is it?
Correct, no.
Understood. All right, so now we have Councilmember Nusma, followed by Herakakis, followed by Ravel, followed by Harris, followed by Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Saffredin asked one of my questions, um, so I'll, I'll continue by saying, like, I am really proud to live in a community like Evanston, where we're at the forefront of reparations, and I'm, I understand that the lack of projected cannabis revenue is really affecting our plans here, and I'd like to figure out a way to fund, uh, our reparations program, so we can take care of the, especially the seniors, who are going to need the money sooner rather than later. I am, uh, kind of balking at a $5 million ask, which takes our ARPA fund almost down to, uh, you know, fully, almost fully depletes our ARPA fund, without taking a minute to think about it, um, and if we approve it tonight, it would be for action, so, uh, I'm, I'm uncomfortable taking action on this tonight. Uh, I, one way or the other, I'd like to find more money for, uh, for reparations, but, um, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with this ask for this evening, so that's all for now.
Councilmember Herakakis, followed by- Councilmember Haddakaris, followed by Revel, followed by Harris, followed by Burns.
I think I answered my own question here, but we still have the $3 million for the participatory budgeting set aside. I think I just got the updated, okay.
Councilmember Revel, followed by Harris, followed by Burns.
I guess I'm on the same wavelength as Councilmember Nusma. I, I do think it's really important, or I appreciate adding economic development to a focus area for our reparations work, because I think that's something that the, that the community's been expecting all along. But I guess I would feel a lot more comfortable if there were more detail to what's going to be, what the ARPA funds would be used for. Because all the other ARPA proposals that we've had before have had much more detailed budgets or expense categories or something. So I get, I'm, I'm not comfortable moving forward with this tonight either without more detail. And, and I do, and $5 million is, is a, is a really big ask, I think. I mean, looking at our ARPA, our dwindling ARPA funds, which seemed so plentiful at the beginning. I think I had one more thought here. Well, oh, and then, actually, I'd like to pick up on something Councilmember Reed mentioned, which is, you know, I share his concern about if this is, if we're using ARPA funds, if this has to be census tract, their eligibility rather than the focus on our black residents. So, so I'm not, I can't remember exactly where you, where you ended up with your comments, Councilmember Reed. But anyway, I guess I'm, I think I just have a lot more questions than I have answers to be able to move forward with this tonight.
Mr. Cummings.
Again, I don't want to steal anything from the committee or any other staff that works on this, but the $5 million, from my understanding, represents a request of the council for ARPA funds to go toward economic development. Not necessarily that there's a program in place, but it is an opportunity for the council to give the committee the $5 million so that they can actually accept applications somewhat similarly to what we already do for ARPA funds that are geared towards economic development in areas that have been historically divested and segregated in Evanston. The qualified census tracts in Evanston, they're attached in a packet, nearly mirror, if they don't exactly mirror, the redlining, historical redlining in the city. So yes, they would be restricted to qualified census tracts, but the federal government routinely uses income and where you live based on segregation as similes or metaphors for race, as a way to sort of get around using race directly. So just to answer just those two points that Councilmember Revel raised.
Councilmember Harris, followed by Burns, followed by Kelly. Councilmember Burns.
I was just gonna say, can we use it towards, to support the restorative housing program that already exists?
Not if you're just limiting it to people who've been chosen through the, who have been identified through our process. That would not meet federal requirements.
But what about, what if it went towards people who already live within qualifying census tracts? Who both, you know, were eligible to receive reparations, but also live within qualifying census tracts, which many of them I'm sure do.
The requirements for the federal government don't exactly mirror our eligibility requirements to Sarah's point. And what the Treasury says that we can use those, those dollars for, it might be able to be used for rental assistance, for example, but wouldn't necessarily be able to use what the city's unrestricted, for lack of a better way to describe it, funds can be used to help build wealth creation, which is the point of the reparations program.
Can it, very specifically, can it be used for mortgage assistance, for home repairs? For any of those?
It could be in qualified census tracts or with income eligibility. It couldn't be used.
So if we send back to the federal government, if we send back to the federal government all the people who are already eligible to receive reparations, but also live within qualifying census tracts and said, yes, they do live within the redline area, which is also a qualifying census tract, we would like to direct ARPA funds to support them? You know?
Provided they met all the other requirements that the Treasury rule sets out, that's possible, yes.
But I do not believe you could restrict the help to only those people.
I think we restrict it to reparations beneficiaries, some that we know, some that we will know moving forward when we create other programs. But yeah, I think we restrict it to the reparations, you know, current and future reparations beneficiaries in the same way that the city that you mentioned did.
I don't think we can do that, because that would be, because it's all race-based. It would all be race-based.
But it doesn't have to be race-based, that's what I'm saying. That's up to.
Well, that's the way our reparations people have been chosen so far. So I, I don't know how you can get around that.
So I guess to Sarah's point, if you're, if we're only gonna limit it to people who are already eligible?
Right.
Race was a qualifier.
And so because they've already been approved, that would be the issue. We can't go back and say for the, for this particular, for approval through federal government, we understand that, that it should not be race-based, but these people are also in qualifying, almost re-qualify the recipients.
We would have to re-qualify them under the federal guidelines, yes.
But we could do that, right?
I mean, if you could design a screen that does not utilize race, but gives you the same group of people, then yes. I think, I think the concern is that's probably not possible.
I'm saying, could we limit it to people that are eligible to receive reparations? And then re-qualify people who we've already approved?
I'm sorry to jump in, but I think the answer is no, because the first half of your sentence was race-based.
Right.
And the feds won't let us.
I understand what I'm saying. I, I can, I need to, I'll figure it out on my own after this meeting. But that's, that's why, I don't think there is, I don't think there is strict, if we brought them names of people that we've re-qualified, one second, that we've re-qualified as, because a part of this reparations program was also looking at a redlined area, as Council Cummings said. But that's like the basis for the reparations program, which isn't a qualifying census tract. And so if we emphasize that's also the reason why we've approved reparations and only forward people who either live or once lived in that qualifying census tract, I don't see what the federal government would, why they would be concerned. When we've already stated in the case of reparations, a redlined area, which many of the recipients continue to live in.
Can I respond to you? You're, you're in the queue, I promise we'll get to you. Yeah, if I can respond to you. I, I, no, because again, as folks have reiterated, the first part is, unless we were to open that program up and allow anyone else to apply as well who lives within those, and then taking away, yeah, yeah, we could say these people are qualified, could these reparations ancestors or whoever are qualified for the ARPA funds, but we'd also have to allow other folks within those districts, regardless of race, to apply.
Yes.
That is correct.
Yes.
And also.
Councilmember Harris, did you want to take your time now?
Yes, thank you. So I just want to say that I'm 5 million percent behind this, that we need to do what's right. And we understand that the $5,000, $5 million is a big ask, but it's an appropriate ask. And we understand that there's other issues on the table. We just ended up giving 1.2 million dollars for someone to be able to purchase a building. This money will recirculate itself in Evanston, right? It will help the community in which disenfranchised people. So it's important that we live up to the commitment and try to fix the harm. I get it, $5 million is a lot, but it is nowhere near what is due to this population. Evanston will never be able to repay that. $5 million is actually a slap in the face. So I really want us to consider this ask. And I think Tashik, did you have something? I wanted to give her my time.
Good evening, members of the City Council, Mayor, City Manager Luke Stowe, Tashik Kurasis into the City Manager. So I was gonna answer the mayor's question in how to look at this program without attaching race to it. So I did look at the city of Fort Worth, Texas. They have a redline map area as well. And what they did, they kind of layered the residual impacts of the redline community with other aspects such as access to affordable housing, proximity to healthcare facilities to create their program, so.
Councilmember Harris, are you still? Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. So, of course, I'm 100% supportive of reparations. I do think there are other programs currently. I know our, a lot of the department heads and council members and Mayor Biss, we've met over many weeks now, looking at developing a program of alternative response. And I know Director Ogbo and Director and Chief Polup are putting together numbers to see what that kind of response system would cost. And so I feel like at this point, and that, those would also be then, again, also targeting very, you know, in this case, vulnerable, our vulnerable populations. So I think this is so needed by our city as well as CSO, CSO, whether it's, you know, street enforcement team or CSO personnel. And that can happen in conjunction or without with LEAP. I mean, in terms of allocating the funding for that, I mean, that can continue to merge with, if we end up getting a third party. But I would like to just get some of those numbers back so that we can make a decision with that also going forward. And I just also want to say, I do hear from some of my residents, black residents, some who, and I know this is not for homeownership, right, this $5 million? This would not be, is that correct? Because I have residents, black residents, and the Housing Authority, low-income housing. And I've spoke with some of the people at Cook County that they could receive it and continue to remain there. And I, it is a little bit, you know, that only, you know, that it's all tied to this homeownership. And I, but I understand this would not be tied to that, is that what we're saying?
Correct, this is economic development.
This is, but we don't, but it's still a little bit vague in terms of, I think I would also like to see this more defined. So two things, I'd like to see what we, what we come forward with in terms of an alternative response program to bolster trilogies, which is federally funded and has a broad swath of territory it has to cover. So just like other communities, they're bolstering the efforts of the federal money for mental health. So I'd like to see what that kind of cost would be before we, since this is the end of our, of our bucket of money. So I'd rather wait to see what we're looking at in order to fund outreach programs potentially for next year. And I'd also like to see this more defined. Thank you.
Point of just information, are you saying out of ARPA, that the mental health would, funding would be, okay.
Correct.
So no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we'll go to folks, the many folks who have signed up to speak for a second time, beginning with Councilmember Reed, who's got two and a half minutes left.
Yeah, thank you. I, I wonder if, given, you know, where this committee is regarding ARPA funding and, you know, concern about leaving some of that aside for future projects, I wonder, given the concerns about, you know, maintaining our strictly race-based reparations program, if it would be better for us to use reserve funds to, you know, whether it's 3.5 million, 4 million, 5 million, I don't want to undersell the reparations. So let's just say 5 million or 3.5 million, whatever it is, if that seems like something folks get behind more so. And I think that would, you know, that would give the reparations committee a bit more flexibility about how we use these funds. Did you, Councilmember Rue Simmons? If you want to, did you want to add something? Oh, no, go ahead.
Please, please come up.
Thank you, grateful to be here. Thank you all for your service and sacrifice. I remember these late meetings. I just want to say just a little bit of history on why, thank you, Corporation Council Cummings for identifying ARPA dollars as an appropriate revenue stream for economic development. And economic development is one of three priorities in Resolution 126R19. And those priorities were informed by a community process that happened in 2019 that was open to stakeholders. Meetings were held over, over the course of months. And the community said housing, economic development, and educational initiatives. And so what Corporation Cummings, Council Cummings has done is identified a way that we could use the ARPA dollars for economic development. And the most likely use of economic development based on community feedback from 2019 were more collective benefits. So a census tract actually would be in line with some of the recommendations that came in 2019 for collective benefit, looking at business districts and the Fifth Ward and so on. So although it's not exact and ideal in what we would like to see for reparations, it certainly meets the needs of the community in, in really making a demand and a case for economic development through collective benefits, which could be business, grants for whole business districts like the SEBA or the, you know, what's the one?
Howard Street Business District.
Exactly, right. And so I just want to make that sort of historical point to bring us to how we got to even economic development. And it would be responding to the community. We're hearing from residents all the time, what's next for reparations? And so there's a lot of appreciation and hope in our first step on housing, but we're hearing from residents that are more interested in economic development. And the thing about reparations and, and the remedies, they're so broad. And we heard from the community, everyone has a definition of reparations is, we have three priorities in Evanston. Other institutions, and I'll take this time to say, other institutions in town need to be joining us in reparations, because the city can't do it by itself. But we did commit to housing, economic development, and educational initiatives. And this ARPA fund would be one way for us to make a first step, seed a fund that we can take steps forward for economic development initiatives. And if there is any questions on what type of recommendations came through that community process in 2019, it is on the reparations website. Tashik can send you that memo from two specific meetings that just asked three questions of the residents. What forms of reparations do we want to see? How might we fund it and who should be eligible for those reparations? So I just want to add that, just as context, and then be available if there are any other questions. But Providence, Rhode Island is one of the cities that has been inspired by the great commitment of this City Council and the city of Evanston. And they did move forward using ARPA dollars without any reservation.
And if I can reclaim my time here, thank you, Councilmember Alderman Rue Simmons? Alderman Rue Simmons, once an Alderman, always, I guess, except for the folks who are still up here. Yeah, so with that, I mean, I, I'm happy to move forward with ARPA if that's, that's the wish. You know, I don't know if when I voted on this at committee that I had the understanding that this wasn't going to continue to be race-based and specifically for African Americans. I'm fine if it's more of a communal thing. I think as long as the committee is fine with that. And particularly if it's only going to be split between the Fifth Ward Business District and the Howard Business District, I'm even more fine with that. Because I think, you know, our end of town now has the largest population of black folks in Evanston and certainly needs, you know, its fair share of investment. I still would maintain that I think we can do this without ARPA funds and still have, be able to do the exact same thing and have maybe even more flexibility to continue to target it in a bit more. I'm not against the ARPA, but I, I wonder if there's appetite from this committee to use reserve funds and give more flexibility and still make the same dollar amount investment, still can be put toward economic development. still can be put toward economic development initiatives.
So that concludes your time, Councilmember. The lineup is Councilmembers Nusma, Hadakakis, Harris, Burns, and Revel. Councilmember Nusma, you have three minutes and 50 seconds left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wonder whether we would be having this conversation if we had two or even three cannabis dispensaries in full operation at this point.
I think we would, because this is a separate, this is movement, sorry, I don't want, but I think we would.
And I also wonder, since we're talking about economic development, we already have an economic development committee that's using ARPA money. And equity is, you know, one of the criteria applied at the Economic Development Committee when distributing ARPA dollars. Inside, I'm coming back to where I was originally, looking for a way to get to yes to funding reparations, but reluctant to commit to $5 million in ARPA this evening. So I'm gonna cede the rest of my time, or reserve the rest of my time, I'll say.
Councilmember Hadakakis with four minutes and 50 seconds left.
Okay. So my question would be like, would it be preferable if we could find another fund with the same amount of money that would give the reparations committee the flexibility to only give money to black businesses? Just curious about that.
Can I respond? So one thing that I, I should have said was, it's really hard to hear that 5 million is so much and in, in, in the, in the big scheme of things. We just saw a collective of black staff come. We are here on reparations because of historic harms that we have acknowledged. And the 5 millions is the remnants of the initial ARPA dollars. So the ARPA contribution from the federal government was how much? 40 million or?
Two.
Right. And so we're talking about it on the tail end. You know, I wish that as a committee, we would have been more proactive and hear earlier in budget discussions. And I'll take that responsibility that we weren't here earlier. But it is difficult to hear when we give one business, you know, making up one family, you know, one and $2 million to think that to give a collective benefit to the black community for anti-black practices, $5 million is too much. But yes, to your point, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to figure it out. $10 million always was a seed, a first step in repair, knowing that that wasn't a settlement, but a way, an attainable way to start our process, our very complex process of reparations. But these ARPA funds are also an, an answer. They are a solution and one that would allow us to establish some foundation in economic development with the direction of Nick Cummings and more likely a collective benefit. So I, I still support and hope that you continue the conversation on ARPA dollars as we look for additional funds. And I hope that you can help us think about additional funds. There's another very appropriate revenue stream on this agenda that is a home rule tax. And it, we have every right as a city to, to legislate and direct those funds within our values because it is a home rule tax. And so that will come up next.
So I had a question, I think, for Sarah then. Are there, are there things in our budget right now that could be funded with ARPA so we could have a, a similar amount, 5 million, but not with any restrictions around it? Are there things that could be funded by ARPA that are currently in the budget?
Things that are reparations goals or?
No, he's saying, could we use, could we use this $5 million as something that we were going to use general funds on to free up $5 million of general funds that wouldn't have federal restrictions on them?
Well, it depends on, you know, technically, you could take 5 million and make it into replacement revenue again because we do have a higher cap in replacement revenue than we actually have expended or have budgeted in there. That means basically we can use the funds for city purposes that aren't necessarily ARPA-eligible or don't easily meet ARPA requirements. One of the ironic things, when you think about it, is could you make it replacement revenue and then use it differently? But I don't want to go there. Somehow I think we'd get in trouble if we did that.
And right on cue, our legal counsel turns his light on.
I just wanted to be, to be very clear because we've had this debate within the committee, that now's the time, if there is a revenue source or revenue stream that you feel would be appropriate to allocate to reparations, now's the time as we are setting up the budget. And that's precisely why R2 was set up the way that it is. It is, it is, the council would be voting on essentially taking a line item of revenue to allocate to a specific fund rather than doing an interfund transfer. So if, if that shell game, for lack of a better way to describe it, is something that this council wants to do now as part of the budget discussion, now's the time to, to do it. Thanks.
Councilmember Harris with four minutes left.
So I think Audra Roman, Rue Simmons, said clearly, we're, we're facing some serious implications on race in the city. And as I stated before, $5 million doesn't even put a Band-Aid on it. And we are, we've looked at a couple instances this evening in making people whole and doing the right thing with our pensions for police and for fire. So I want us to be careful when we think this is too much money to make some things right and to look at how that money makes Evanston a better place, how that money recirculates through Evanston, how it makes Evanston people whole when we saw on at least five occasions a group of people who have worked hard and have shown us the issues that they have faced. So we know firsthand, we're not hearing, we're not watching it on TV, we know. And we're part of that. So there are implications.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burns with two and a half minutes left.
I think while it's fair to say that, that a lot of people supported kind of collective impact work in reparations, I think it's also fair to say that a lot of people also supported direct impact, which we see in our restorative housing program and what is, and even in what has been called for, direct cash benefits. I think I'm fine continuing to discuss ARPA allocation. We can decide how much. I am most certainly going to make an amendment that we use reserve funds, probably up to 2 million, to support our seniors who are on the, you know, who have numbers now for the restorative housing program. We've already approved it at committee. We know what the money is going towards. We already, you know, have an organizational partner that's funding it. I would feel very uncomfortable in whatever we do here, not making a dent in supporting people who are already on the list, especially our seniors, which is about 122 people, I was told, is about 3 million. If we can find reserve, about 2 million in our reserve fund, that in addition to the $1 million that I think we'll be talking about on the next item, I think in the next two years or whatever it would take to get in that real estate money, we, we could completely, we could, we could finish supporting our seniors who are, again, who have a number and who are waiting to, to, to be supported by this. So that, again, I'm more than happy to continue to talk about ARPA funds, but I am going to make an amendment to do that if we're gonna make.
There's a referral.
I'm sorry?
There's a referral on it already.
Well, I mean, we're, it's a budget discussion, so we don't have to wait for the referral. But I, I most certainly are gonna make, I'm gonna make that amendment. I think it's important we make, we take care of the, everybody in the restorative housing program and then, you know, I want to see where the conversation goes in terms of economic development.
Councilmember Revel with three minutes and 15 seconds left.
Well, we have, we've heard a whole lot of different ideas of projects. I guess what I, what I would like to see is a, an ARPA accounting, where are we? What have we already allocated? And what are the other projects, ideas that are coming to us, some, some tonight and some in the wings, so that we, you know, can make a fully informed decision about, about using the ARPA funds? And then in terms of using reserves or real estate transfer tax or whatever, my, my impression, my understanding is that even if we put in like 5 million next year, it takes a while to actually hand it over to, to our ancestors and for them to use it. So it's not, it's not like they all can spend it all in one year. So I think we could kind of lay out a, a plan, a multi-year plan. And so ultimately, I don't want to cut anybody off from discussing, but I think we need to table this, the ARPA discussion until we have, at least I would feel more comfortable if we had a spreadsheet that showed us what we've already allocated and what's left and what, and what are the other programs that are still, that are on people's wish lists, I guess.
So I would propose that we handle this similarly to how we handled Councilmember Kelly's request earlier, that I recognize that you want to make that motion, but you also indicated, and I think appropriately, that we should let the discussion play out. So we can go back to you to make that motion whenever else has had their, their opportunity. Speaking of which, at this time, no one is asking to speak for a second time. So we go back for thirds, beginning with Councilmember Nusma with two minutes and 50 seconds left.
Councilmember Revel said what I was gonna say. I'm looking for a way to get to yes, I don't think it's gonna happen tonight. So I would, I would second a motion to table this if that motion were to be made.
I would just respectfully urge those of you who are thinking about that, who have some time to think about it, to think about what date you're tabling it to, so that we have, so that you pick a date that's at the right spot, so that it's A, as soon as possible, but B, far enough in the future that we have time to get the information we need and sift through all the ideas that were, there's a bunch of ideas at this dais tonight, which is great, but they need to play into that. Councilmember, nope, Mr. Cummings.
I just wanted to remind the council that holding this would not require a vote, but it would put it on the next council, regular city council meeting. Tabling is, you would actually have to pick a date and it would require a vote.
Next is Councilmember Harris with two minutes and 35 seconds left.
I just want us to be careful. We didn't do that for any other ARPA requests, say, let's see what's out there. We made decisions. We did not think about what's in the pipeline. We made decisions, we voted on things. I feel some kind of way about that, that I get it, that it's a large amount. I get that. And it's scary. But we did not do that for any other ARPA, like, well, let's see what's out there, let me see a spreadsheet before we make this decision. Makes me very nervous that we've decided to do that on reparations tonight. I get it, that's the end of the money, but we knew the end of the money was coming when we paid for the things. So you're telling me today that now we want to see a spreadsheet of how we're going to spend the money? The money was coming to an end at any point, so.
Councilmember Reed's time has expired, but if you have one, a few seconds, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. We can think of it as reparations. Sorry, that's important. So I, I, I am, I just want to second the, one, I don't know if we can have a reparations meeting that, you know, call a special meeting in the interim to discuss this at reparations, if that's a possibility. I, you know, I agree with Councilmember Harris. I think that, you know, we need to make this investment, this, you know, reminds me of the CARP vote earlier. It's like, some of this is gonna be painful, we're gonna have to, or, or hard, we're gonna have to give something up in order to actually live up to our values. And I'm hoping this body can do that. Again, I'm supportive of 5 million ARPA, I'm supportive of 5 million in general fund reserve. I think we need to make the $5 million investment. I think we need to get it however we can. We can split it to, to, you know, half ARPA, half general fund reserve, however we get there, I'm happy to get there. And I, I think it's beyond time to make this investment. And so if we need to hold a special reparations meeting to get some more information, maybe, maybe we don't need to do that. Maybe we understand that, you know, that this is a necessary investment.
Councilmember Burns with just a half a minute left.
I just wanted to say what I support is, I support 2 million out of ARPA, 2 million out of reserves, and then the, I thought it was a million a year for the, the transfer that, I know we're gonna discuss that next, but. So that's what I would support, that totals 5 billion. I am, like I said, very concerned that we do not have what it takes to take care of the 122 ancestors. Again, we already know what the program is. They're literally just waiting for funding. And so, which is why I would want to split it up. So that's, that's what I'm gonna be advocating for and, and I'll make an amendment whenever we're ready, yeah.
Councilmember Revel?
Well, first I'd just like to respond to Councilmember Harris. Previous ARPA requests that have come to council have, have come with a detailed budget, you know, description of the, you know, exactly what, how the money's gonna be used. So, you know, this is, this is coming to us without all that. So that's, and then, and then it is also to sort of saying, oh my gosh, you know, it's our, you know, this is the end of our money, ARPA money, which, you know, had to happen at some point. And, and then, and then I just, I, if there are, if there are ideas that are in development that are really ready to come to us as, you know, right now as well, I'd like to know what those are. So I, I guess, would the reparations committee like to have a meeting before we talk about this again? Oh, okay, sorry, okay. Right.
Let me, if I, if I can jump in really quick to answer part of that, I, I think what the ask here is, is that we turn the $5 million over, some dollar amount over to reparations and trust the reparations committee, the black community, to decide for itself how we want to use the $5 million. And without this body having to weigh in on each individual proposal and just let the reparations committee figure it out. And, you know, give us, give the reparations committee 5 million, let us come up with something, let us go out to the community and say, hey, we've got $5 million now to support the black community. What are your proposals? What are your ideas? I'll wrap up, I see.
And what is, what is the deadline by which we have to spend our ARPA funds?
We have to allocate by 20, oh, 2024 and spend by 2025.
Let's, Councilmember Revel is the floor.
Yeah, everything has to be literally to a written agreement that is executable by December 31st, 2024, and all funds have to be expended by December 31st, 2026. So there's some time, but, you know.
Let me just weigh in here. I think what we need, if that's the direction the council wants to go, is discipline not to spend the money on something else while those conversations are ongoing. And I would just really, I would just really urge that. I think, I'll just indicate, I've heard a lot of really great ideas up here, and I think if someone feels uncomfortable voting now based on how many things need to be weighed, that makes a lot of sense to me. Just then, don't come back and spend the $5 million on something else next week because we need to, if we're gonna have a conversation about whether this is the right thing, we need to leave those dollars in reserve.
I don't quite know what the date, I, Councilmember Nusma, do you have an idea of a date?
Of the motion to, to table?
To table?
Today is November, well, it's actually the 15th now, everybody. Happy Tuesday. So it would be November 28th or December 12th.
We could do the 21st as well because there's a special meeting then.
It's a special meeting then, but wouldn't, if we held it, it would have to come back to a regular meeting. If we're tabling it, it can come back to any meeting. At 20, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna be out of town on the 21st, so I have a personal interest in not having it be then, so. So I have a personal interest in not having it be then, so. 28th, is that enough time?
If we have a commitment to hold that money, as the mayor said, if you all spend that money, I would be so furious.
Well, the money can't get spent before the 28th.
I know, well, we don't have to meet.
I mean, I think, I think there's a, again, I want to reiterate. I heard a ton of really, really legitimate ideas that kind of don't, that are incompatible with each other, right? So we can't do all of them because they involve different directions. And so if folks, if folks need time to, to get this right, I think that's, that's fine. Again, as long as we don't, I'm not interested in, I would be very wary of delaying for the sake of delaying. I would be very supportive of delaying for the sake of getting this right. But late breaking news, which is that Councilmember Nguyen is requesting to speak for the first time. So let's go to, sorry, Councilmember Revel is the floor. Do you want to see the floor to others?
I see the floor, yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. I have been, as everyone else has during this discussion, scratching my head on how to, as Jonathan says, get to yes. I need more time and more information, but I certainly don't intend to spend this $5 million on anything else. I want to understand better what the reparations committee had in mind for this. I also feel very strongly about Councilmember Burns' point that we have seniors who are waiting, who have been selected, and, and we have a program for them. And we need to make sure that we, we get that funded sooner rather than later. So I would also support the motion to table because I need more time. And I think from the sound of it, others on the, on the dais need more time as well.
So now, 12, one second. So now we go back to Councilmember Harris with a minute. December. All right, so we'll go back then.
Does Councilmember Revel have a motion on the table?
She was sort of in the process of formulating a motion.
I'm trying to figure out what the, what the best date was.
If I can, to her motion, if I can point of information, you know, and what information are folks looking for between now and whatever date we put this on that you don't have now? Because I think what the reparations committee, again, I'll reiterate this, what the reparations committee is seeking is for this commu, this council to trust the black community, to trust the reparations committee to come up with their own process. And there have been years of work that have been put into this, laying this foundation. And we're just asking to trust and make an investment in the black community. The committee will figure out how to spend this money responsibly and have high impact in the black community.
So we're going to go to Councilmember Burns, then quickly go back to Councilmember Revel to make the motion. Councilmember Burns?
I just wanted to underscore what Councilman Reed just said. There's no way by the 28th you're going to get a fully flushed-out economic development reparations program similar to restorative housing. That took, you know, a year to build. So you're literally, you're going to get the same proposal at the next meeting with, you know, very little additional information. Which is why, again, I still say that I think there's some benefit to, to reducing the ARPA ask to 2 million, because there are still some things that we could do with ARPA that we need to do, especially around economic development for the city and other areas. We could use that 2 million to, to put a big dent in what we, what we already know. Oh, we talked a lot about obligations today with our police and fire. We are obligated to 122 people plus descendants. That's not even the full list of people that we're obligated to. So let's take care of the 122 people at the very least with whatever we do up here, and then use 2 million from ARPA. I agree with what Councilman Reed said. I think it is consistent with the way that the, the, the ability to craft different programs that we've, we've done that consistently throughout reparations, that we set aside a portion of funds in the same way that we did for cannabis revenue. And we allow the reparations committee, that is comprised of descendants, some descendants of our ancestors and people who are eligible to receive reparations, as well as three councilmembers up here, to determine how to use those funds. And so I think to remain consistent with how we treated this, you know, we would set aside 2 million, or we would, we would set aside the 2 million that could be used towards a future economic development program once it's established. But we're not going to be able to put that together by the 28th.
Councilmember Hadakaris with 4 minutes and 10 seconds left.
So, you know, sitting up here, it was really interesting when I got the packet and I had a lot of questions and, you know, like, oh, where would you get the money from? And really, as I sit up here, I'm ready to vote to give the money to the reparations committee tonight because they all know what your community needs. And so I'm ready to vote and move forward, so.
Councilmember Revel?
Well, but I'm hearing Councilmember Burns now talking 2 million of ARPA funds for the economic development. So I guess, I would, I guess I move to table this to our December, our first meeting in December, December 12th.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So Councilmember Revel moves to table item R1 to the December 12th, the first regular council meeting of, in December, which I believe is the only regular council meeting in December, which I believe is December 12th. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, can't discuss the motion to table. Is that correct, Mr. Cummings?
That's correct.
Will the clerk please take the roll on the motion to table?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Hadakaris?
No.
With five voting in favor and four voting against, the motion carries and the item is tabled to the December 12th meeting. This brings us to item R2. Would someone care to make a motion on item R2?
I'll move item R2, resolution 120R22, directing the CFO to deposit revenues generated from the graduated real estate transfer tax to, from the sale of real estate valued over 1.5 million to the reparations fund.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Reed moves passes of resolution 120-R22. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Is there any discussion on this item? Councilmember Newsma?
So I just want to make sure I understand this. Is it, we're talking about revenue for properties that sell for 1.5 million or more? Or are we talking about the marginal value of properties above that? It's late, I'm not sure I'm making myself clear, but maybe.
We're talking about the tax collected over, for, tax collected on properties that sell for over 1.5 million. So our, the way our city code is written, there's a real estate transfer tax. And there's also a tax for properties over 1.5 but less than 5. And then another tax levy for anything over 5. So what this is asking for is anything over 1.5. That particular tax, that portion of the tax collected goes to the reparations fund.
So if you sell a building for 1.4 million dollars, that transfer tax goes into the general fund?
Yes.
If you sell a building for 1.5, 1 million dollars, the entire amount of the transfer tax goes into the reparations fund? Or just the?
The increment of the tax collected over the 0.5 million.
That was my question. Thanks for clarifying. That's all I had.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Sorry, I just got a text. Councilmember Saffredin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in the proposed budget, this money is allocated to the general fund. And if this were to pass tonight, that would create, what, like a 1.6 million dollar transfer there? Is that, is that what it's budgeted at? I don't know if the test is still here, or somebody can answer that question?
We're waiting for Mr. Desai to approach the podium. He's in discussion right now about that question.
I just want to, yeah, good evening again. I want to clarify that the numbers I provided to the reparations committee, they were for the total tax in that category. So like when I said for one year, in 2021, or even this year, as of September, we have received 441,000 in the category of 1.5 million to 5 million. That's entire tax, not just the incremental tax. So yes, reparations won't necessarily get that 441,000. They would just get the very minimal amount. Because if you are taking our first 1.5 billion dollars out of that, the tax on that 1.5, the remainder amount would be very little, depending on the value of the property. Does it make sense, Nick?
The way the code states is that it's the $7 for every $1,000 of value or fraction thereof as stated in the declaration per transaction.
Right.
And then for the $9 for per 1,000 of value or fraction thereof per transaction over anything over 5 million. So that's, the way the code is written is the way the resolution is written.
So are you planning to give a whole $7 to the reparations or only $2, which is the incremental of the base?
The way that it's written is the $7.
Okay, that's good then.
Seven and nine dollars. And then Councilmember, Councilmember Saffredin had a question as to, on the budget. Right now, it's sent to the general fund. How, is there, is there need to be a replacement for that revenue?
I mean, and that's a good point, going back to the, I think, our SP1 discussion, where I think Councilmember Kelly said, let's increase our budget by 300,000 or something in transfer tax. Obviously, we kind of, and I'm sorry I missed out this whole thing because it wasn't approved by the council yet. But yeah, we would lose this potentially a million dollar revenue if we get million dollars there, or whatever we get. This year, obviously, we have over a million dollars there. In '21, we got over a million dollars. So if we get more than a million dollars, we will lose a million dollars in the general fund in the real estate transfer tax.
Okay, so. And we don't have a proposed replacement for that?
No.
Right now, at 12:30 tonight. Well, you know, I would ask my colleagues if they think it would be appropriate to hold this until we sort that out. Or if anybody has a solution that they can see right now to that problem, which I believe is solvable. But I don't know what the solution is at this moment.
The discussion earlier was that there were certain revenues that were underbudgeted? That was, that was moved to next week to discuss.
Right, I mean, I mean, Councilmember Kelly's amendment is definitely a solution to this problem. The challenge is that Councilmember Kelly wants to claim that revenue for something else. So then, so then it becomes a fight between pensions and reparations for that same million dollars, which is, I don't think a place any of us want to be.
I guess, I guess the point is, I don't know if there are other revenue areas that Councilmember Kelly feels are underbudgeted, that there may be a million dollars.
Well, is Councilmember Saffredin, are you done for now?
Well, and, and, just when we talk about things being underbudgeted or overbudgeted, I mean, we're, those are also just educated speculative best guesses, right? We're not talking about hard revenue that we know is coming in, right? So I mean, this is, this is all speculative, anyway. I mean, I have a concern that we're creating a million dollar hole without even like a credible way to think that we might fill it. But I'll leave it there and listen to what everyone else has to say.
Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I appreciate the concern about the budget and what the impacts here are. But I want to note that we have a, and will maintain a healthy reserve. Even with this, I think we can dip into our surplus. I'll even say not just reserve, but our surplus money and ensure that we get, it's a million dollars. We certainly have it. We have $14 million projected in surplus for next year. I mean, it's starting to winnow down, certainly, but that's where we are. I think we can move forward on this tonight and figure it out and know that, you know, we, we have the money to make this investment. Particularly if we see this as something important. We, we, we made a commitment to reparations. Again, it's going to sting to do this. If it was easy, I don't, we wouldn't have gotten the recognition, recognition that we got. And I think we need to live up to that. We need to actually make the investment and take the ding. It's, it's a million dollars. Again, we have the money in reserves. We should, we should use that money to repair the black community.
Councilmember Burns?
You know, in understanding, this is just a projection of what we think we may get. Again, my amendment I'm going to eventually make, or what I support, is 2 million out of ARPA, 2 million out of reserve. I know, but adding the 2 million out of reserve with the 1 million here makes our seniors whole, that have already been approved for the program. It's $3 million, 122 people-ish, as far as the 3 million. But that makes them whole. And then we can work on, satisfying the obligation to the descendants who already qualified for the program and were approved. So I, I support this for that reason. And I think we have to, I've said earlier, you know, that previewing this discussion, that we need to start talking about revenue, not just to meet this obligation, but, but many others.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Please.
This makes the most sense. This is a home rule tax. It's coming with a memo of support from our corporation council. It allows us to continue in the narrow tailoring of remedy in correlation to the harm that has been proven successful and the model that has given us the attention of not only this nation, but now international attention. The city and the council, we can't continue to take in all of the praise for our boldness and our steps forward and not be uncomfortable, do the work. To this point, we are still riding on a commitment that was made by the 80th city council in 2019. And moving forward, dispersing with commitments that were made in 2019. It makes a lot of sense. And Corporation Council Cummings, if you want to give more feedback on your memo on why this tax makes sense, I think that would be helpful right now because the council really respects your office and your opinion. And you took a lot of time to come up with a way that you can support the city legally in this process. But to the point that Councilmember Burns continues to make, we have 122 ancestors that are on a list, waiting for their number to be called. And this would be a way that we can continue dispersing beyond the 16 that we have dispersed. This would, I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, go into the current program and be eligible for the restorative housing program. And also begin to seed the descendants as well.
Councilmember Revel?
Well, I do think, given that we've, our dispensary source has not proven as lucrative as we had anticipated, I, I do think this is the only way we can make any headway with, with the repair that we've promised to, certainly to the ancestors and, and then beyond that. So I'm supportive.
No one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Saffredin with 2 minutes and 40 seconds left.
Yeah, I, I would like to make a motion to hold this.
Councilmember Saffredin moves to hold this. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Kelly, seconds. Councilmember Reed?
I move to overturn the hold.
Councilmember Reed moves to overturn the hold. Is there a second to Councilmember Reed's motion?
Let's have some fun. Yep, okay, there it is.
Councilmember Harris, seconds. Hey, Mr. Cummings, is this a debatable motion, the overturn the hold motion?
I believe the answer is no. And folks, get those IML handbooks that he handed out to us. I learned some new motions that I didn't have, so, so certainly brush up on that.
According to City Council rules, the motion to overrule a hold is debatable.
Is there any discussion on the motion to overrule the hold? Seeing none, with the clerk, oh, sorry.
Or, Mr. Mayor, I'll say.
Councilmember Saffredin.
This, this would be holding it for a week, so like, have this be a part of a cohesive budget plan. It's not like a indefinite stalling tactic. I just think that we need to figure out the budget in total, and a million dollars is not an inconsequential amount of money to figure out how to, how to fill that gap. It's, it's a fillable gap, and this is, this would be holding it, you know, as part of the ongoing budget process. But, everyone, do what you, do what you think's best.
Councilmember Newsma followed by Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ultimately, I, I am supportive of moving in this direction, as Councilmember Ravel said. And if it were three hours earlier, or if I were 15 years younger, I might be able to process this this evening. But, taking a, a, a week to sort it out and figure out how it fits in the budget, I think is worth the time. But, ultimately, I'm going to approve this.
Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, it would be more than a week. But, again, I, I appreciate what Councilmember Saffredin said. He said it's a fillable hole. And so, we can vote on this tonight. We can stand on our values and say that we are going to commit this money to reparations, to the black community, and then we can fill that hole. There's nothing stopping us from figuring out how to fill the hole, if there is a hole down the road. But, we can make our commitment tonight. I'll reserve my time.
Seeing no, no further discussion. Will the clerk please take the roll? And this is the, the late hour, let's be really clear about this. This is the role on the motion to overturn the hold, which requires two-thirds. Correct.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Well, you do me for a curveball there. I think I'm supposed to say yes, so yes.
Correct.
Oh, is it Newsma? Okay.
Yes. Councilmember Saffredin?
No.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadakatis?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and three voting against, the motion carries, the hold is overturned. Is there any further discussion on R2? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
No.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadakatis?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries, and Resolution 120-R22 is passed. This brings us to call of the wards, and... We have four minutes, we're going to lose our videotape, and nobody's watching. Councilmember Kelly?
Public safety, first ward, public safety meeting this Thursday at the Evanston Public Library at 7:30 with Chief Stewart, so hope to see you there.
Councilmember Harris?
November 20, Tuesday, November 29, second ward meeting, ETHS, South Cafe, Backdoor.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No report.
Councilmember Newsma?
Coffee with Chief Stewart, 9:00 AM at Berry Pike on Thursday this week, the 17th.
Councilmember Burns?
I just want to announce, December 6th, District 65, City of Evanston, is holding a, let's call it a town hall, an informational meeting, to talk through programming at the Fifth Ward School, to also talk about Phase 2 of the reassignment, student assignment committee, and then also to review concept site plans for, for school in the Fifth Ward, as well as, those site plans also show different renderings and opportunities for new Fleetwood, and also one of the renderings keeps Fleetwood as it is and, and proposes some other changes. So, please come out, December 6th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, Fleetwood Jourdain, December 6th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, Fleetwood Jourdain. Thank you.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Chief Stewart will be at Kurtz Cafe Friday morning from 8:30 to 10:30.
Councilmember Ravel?
This Thursday at 7:00 PM is the second of my special topic meetings about the proposed new stadium. This one, we're going to hear from Paul Umbach, whose consulting company did an, an analysis of the economic impact of the proposed stadium.
Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, very quickly, because I know we're running out. We, I heard the majority of the council tonight say that we need to do right by our ancestors, that we need to get that money in. These are folks who are over 70 years old. I put a referral in six months ago, maybe, to transfer that funding over to them. I'd like to make a motion for a special order of business to, you know, get that into this budget season, a transfer of what Councilmember Burns was talking about, of $2 million from our general fund reserve to reparations, to go to our ancestors, so we can make them whole now. We'll have data, we'll have some time, so I'd like to make that special order for the 28th, and I request a second on that.
Councilmember Reed makes moves to create a special order of business on the November 28th regular City Council meeting to transfer $2 million from the general fund to the reparations fund. Is there a second? Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
I'm unclear on what we're voting on. What was the?
This is, I'm sorry, Councilmember, this is a motion made by Councilmember Reed to create a special order of business on the next regular City Council meeting, to effectuate a $2 million transfer from the general fund to the reparations fund.
Ah, no.
For the ancestors, so we can make them whole, to be clear.
Well, if you're going to make, what's the difference? Why are people voting no now? If we're going to get it on?
Aye, I'll vote aye.
Aye, Councilmember Nguyen is aye.
Okay. Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadakatis?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and one voting against, the motion passes, and the special order of business is created. Councilmember Hadakatis?
One item on the 22nd redistricting meeting with Jonathan Newsma, discussing redistricting and how it affects the Ninth Ward.
That concludes call of the wards, and I regret to inform you that Councilmember Newsma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to five ILCS compiled statutes, 120/2A, I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding collective negotiating and litigation. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session, and are enumerated. Exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in 5 ILCS 120/2A, Sections C2 and C11.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves that the City Council resolve itself in the executive session to discuss the aforementioned items. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadakatis?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and at 12:50 AM, the City Council resolves itself into executive session to begin in the councilmember library immediately.